Good evening, everyone. It is five o'clock. We are back from closed session. So Anne Marie, could we please start with the roll call?
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Kemp.
Here.
Councilmember Whalen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orgil.
Here.
Mayor Renagi.
Here. And then Councilmember Kemp is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, do we have any closed session announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council convened in closed session pursuant to the items listed on the agenda. There was no public comment in advance of the closed session. There was no reportable action taken at the closed session, and the City Council recessed at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. And then, Mr. City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda at this time?
There's no additions or deletions, but when we get to the consent calendar, we have a couple of typos I need to clear up.
Okay. So now, we have one item of extraordinary business, a proclamation recognizing Artist's Sunday, which could be any Sunday in Laguna Beach, but it's coming up in November. So I'm going to come down there and present this proclamation. Yep, here. So Artist's Sunday is celebrating, celebrated the Sunday after Thanksgiving, and it's a national movement encouraging people to shop with local artists, makers, and creators in Laguna Beach. Artist's Sunday feels especially meaningful because art is not just part of our economy, it's a part of our identity. For over a century, Laguna Beach has been, well, not over a century, nearing a century, Laguna Beach has been a haven for art. Well, it has been over a century, but incorporated Laguna Beach is, we're almost to a century. So just trying to specify that. We were not incorporated until 1927. Laguna Beach has been a haven for artists from the plein air art painters of the early 1900s to today's contemporary sculptors, jewelers, and photographers. Artist's Sunday celebrates the legacy while supporting the next generation of Laguna creators. So why don't I start by turning it? We have three guests here. So Jay, do you want to start us off?
Thank you so much. The Artis Festival is excited that we will be open on Artist's Sunday, November 23rd, for our 35th Annual Winter Fantasy, and have invited our lead coordinator and former Artis president Rachel Goldman to invite the entire community to that event.
Yes, please. Thank you so much for honoring us and presenting this proclamation. It is very timely for us, very special, and near and dear because we are open. We are the only festival in Laguna Beach open on Artist's Sunday. But we do open on November 21st, and we run five three-day weekends. So I personally want to invite everybody here in the City Council and every Laguna Beach community to come out and enjoy the festivities of the Winter Fantasy. It is truly magical, and the elves have already been busy decorating. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rachel. Michael Urban, Laguna Beach Arts Alliance.
Yeah, Michael Urban, Laguna Beach Arts Alliance, LBAA, is a consortium of 32 members, and we are artists' organizations throughout city that are nonprofit. Many of these organizations are going to be having lots to do on Artist's Sunday. So you'll see ads and information directing to, directing you to several of those events. Thanks.
Good. So let's do a photo up here. And I just, I just want to thank, thank all the arts organizations. We get to see the final product, but there's so much work that goes into it behind the scenes to set up these events. So we cannot be more grateful. Okay. So at this point, we are going to consider public comment on items within the scope of the City Council, but that are not on the agenda. So if you would like to line up a couple of people at a time to provide public testimony, now is your time to do so. You will each have three minutes to speak.
Evening, City Council. Greg Babiani here. Laguna Beach resident for a long time. It was nice having that special meeting with you guys earlier. I just have something pretty simple. The Aliso Beach parking lot on the beach side is, needs a facelift. We all know that. There's a big, you know, back and forth with what we're going to do and this and everything. But just for the time being, I don't know if there's a way, like what the county used to do is they would, you know, pave it, slurry it, stripe it as is, and then you could figure out the whole scope of work because there's, there's cracks, there's potholes, the, the parking space, like designated areas are completely gone. There's a lot of like sand erosion all up in the, you know, obviously the asphalt area. And I just thinking like, from like a liability standpoint and kind of designate areas for people to park because there's people parking like, you know, it's not, it's kind of hectic. And I think now would be the time because it's obviously not peak season, just to do, give it a little TLC while we have some time. And then maybe if it, if it works out that, you know, the public and the residents actually like what was done, like, oh, hey, that's, you know, a lot cheaper than doing a massive, huge, you know, remodel of the parking lot. But if there's any way that we could get some, you know, help down there, that would be grateful. I mean, I saw a lady the other day get out of her car. And I will say the public works, before I go off, say that other statement, the public works did come down and they did clear out the handicap areas that were full of sand. It was like six inches of sand all the way back. So they did a great job. They did clear off the front sidewalk. And, you know, if they could, you know, maybe broom the sidewalk too. I know they use that sidewalk sweeper, but I saw a lady get out of her car and almost, she like tripped because there was a crack in a pothole next to her car. And I was like, oh, that could have been bad. But just a simple thing. I know the county would do that quite frequently, and it was, you know, pretty cost effective to prevent further problems from happening and then just kind of keep, you know, keep it clean down there. So that's pretty much it. But thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. MJ Abraham, South Laguna resident. October 2nd, I sent you all an email regarding a letter I had read from one of our former employees that is no longer with us, deputy fire chief. I don't expect you to respond to it because I know you can't. It's a personnel issue, and I certainly understand that. But I do, but since then, two things have happened. One, I had an opportunity to speak to this employee. I've been involved in employee investigations with a city, and I can tell you, after listening to this employee, I was surprised and very concerned. I think we are going to be looking at another lawsuit, maybe two. I think that alone is worth really considering an outside investigation. The second thing is, I understand that the HR director who was directly involved in this is leaving us in two weeks. I don't know if that's a rumor. Maybe you can clarify that, Dave. But it, the optics don't look good. And aside from that, I would think that the council and the management would want to clear the names of our fire chief and anyone else involved in city staff. The rumors are flying. The credibility of our city manager and our fire chief are at stake here. How things are handled by an HR department is critical. So I can only encourage you to please take, take a second look at this. Apparently, it's not going away. And, and do right by all of everyone involved and make sure that, that they, that they, that no wrongdoing happened. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is James Owen. I'm a retired fire captain from Long Beach Fire Department. Tonight, I'm representing one eight hundred Boardup, a Belford company who work nationwide with fire departments and police departments. But tonight, I'm really not here to sell anything. Today is October 28th. It's National First Responder Day, and it gives us a moment to, to pause and to see the men and women that we stand with that protect our city and provide such a wonderful access and experience to Laguna Beach. I personally have had the opportunity to work with Chief King. He's a very forward-thinking fire chief. He continues to build partnerships and extend protection beyond what a normal incident would, would dictate. He and I have spoken, and I can tell you firsthand, that he is a very committed, proactive, collaborative leader for the benchmark of fire safety for any community. In the months ahead, I'm going to come by, not to sell anything, just to educate, do a three-minute All Things Disaster that I can bring from my experience and also what we already provide for the service, services for Laguna Beach. As a symbol of the spirit of the first responders, I brought our dalmatian, also our, our mascot. It indicates first responders have a dedication of loyalty, service, and heart, and this dalmatian does that. So I look forward to seeing you in the future. And thank you to all the first responders that make Laguna Beach what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Michelle Monda. I spoke here at the last City Council meeting about the incident with the fire chief and the deputy fire chief who has now left, and his, the fire chief's assistant. I asked you to open up an official investigation because there was not one done. Crickets. Last Friday, I wrote a letter to the editor in the Indy, which I have forwarded to all of you and is in your inbox as of right now. And I encourage anyone who doesn't understand what really has been going on to go back to last week's Indy and read my letter to the editor because it spells it all out pretty clearly. We're not letting this go. I know you think you can just, you know, push it under the rug and we'll just go away. Last time we had an incident with a city employee, it didn't end very well for any of you. It was a really ugly affair. It involved CPRAs. It involved going to the DA. It involved the press. Do you really want to go down this path again? How about just doing the right thing and actually doing an investigation into this incident? I also have spoken to the deputy fire chief who is now retired. Personally, after the things she told me, which are even worse than the things that have come out, I hope she sues you because I think that's the only way that we're going to get anywhere with you. Because you think you can stonewall us. You think the residents just can be ignored because we're just a fly. You're just a flea. We're just a tick on you. We're not letting this go. Maybe when she sues, we can get some information. Mostly, my biggest concern is you've breached the fiduciary responsibility you have to we taxpayers. And I want to read a most important line out of my LTE. "The misallocation of public funds for personal reasons is tantamount to theft, and failure to investigate possible theft is to condone it, inviting further abuses on all other levels of city government. Rather than hiding the facts or ignoring them, the City Council must conduct an independent, not city-led, impartial, formal investigation." You owe it to all the residents, especially the taxpayer residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. Over the last 35-plus years, I've been here several different times, and this time I'm wearing my Visit Laguna Beach hat. And I couldn't be prouder. On behalf of our internal Visit Laguna Beach team and the Board of Directors, I'm proud to announce that we've selected Joanna Bear as the new president and CEO of Visit Laguna Beach. She comes with years of experience in our community, and now that we're heading off to a stewardship model and that program, she's going to be terrific. And I'd like to introduce Joanna to you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm thrilled to be part of Visit Laguna Beach and look forward to bringing the stewardship plan to life and working with the community to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on the new role. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Redfern. Let me get my notes out here so I don't mess up. Even though many of you know who I am from Lang Pickleball, that's not why I'm here tonight. I am here tonight with something even more positive than Lang Pickleball. Anthony is the groundskeeper at Molten Meadows Park, or, well, predominantly at Lang Park. I said to him one day, Anthony, what are we doing with all these agavies that just keep multiplying, multiplying? He's, well, they go to the trash. And it's like, no, they need a home across the street from my house on Balboa Avenue in Molten Meadows Park. The vegetation had become very tired, very sorry. And he said, no problem. I said, it's that simple? Ask and you shall receive. So I asked and I received, and I just am here tonight to compliment the city from listening to a resident that's been here since 1973, prior to Molten Meadows Park even being established, which you'll probably be seeing me in the coming weeks because there's big discussion about something I hope positive happening at Molten Meadows Park, just like Molten Meadows Park was positive. And not one person that I know lived up in Arch Beach Heights prior to Molten Meadows Park being installed besides me. So if you can have somebody introduce themselves to me and tell me why they don't want to see what's happening positively at top of, or at Arch Beach Heights, I would love to have a discussion with them. But first of all, I don't even know if you do an employee of the month program, but if you do, I don't even know Anthony's last name, but Anthony deserves a big kudos. And since I know many of you know I'm pickleball player, quite often Anthony will have swept the courts. He will blown them off. We all bring our blowers because many years ago, somebody wasn't thinking about deciduous versus non-deciduous trees. And we have trees that just shed and shed and shed. And you cannot play pickleball on dead leaves, or you're waiting for an accident to happen. But Anthony gladly comes in before we can play, whether it's eight o'clock or nine o'clock, and takes care of the courts for us. So I just, is all you hear is negativity, and I just, I'm tired of it. And I just, thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Claudia, and shout out to Anthony. I hope, I hope he's listening. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Anne Crisman. And I just wanted to let the City Council know, in case they're not down on the promenade and anybody else who might be watching, that the owners of the shoe seller, the shoe store, were here at every meeting for the promenade telling you they would go out of business if you closed down Forest Avenue. And sadly, they have left Forest Avenue after I don't know how many years there. Now, we have four stores in a row vacant. We haven't even broke ground. So how many more for the food court do we have to lose of the retailers? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. Edward Baack, long-term resident of Laguna Beach in California. I just had a quick recommendation. I read the articles in Stu News and read George Weiss's article about the Dorton Investment Group that spent $5 million to purchase unbilled, unbuildable lots, and by a switch of somehow, they all switched to buildable. So my recommendation is I think you need to hire an outside investigation firm, possibly just give it to the FBI. They'll look at it because you're talking, you know, $5 million. They're going to make $200 million. They're going to, they're suing you for $149 million. And it's interesting, they called me in '21 to ask for an evaluation on their office building here on Gleneere, and I owned 1461 at the time, as well as 570. And I spent four and a half years trying to get a $149 million to get a $149 million false lien on one of my buildings that was put on one of my buildings by an attorney from Las Vegas. So I'm just letting you know, there's a lot of influence in Laguna. There's a lot of people from Las Vegas, Nevada, from that that invest in Laguna. There's a lot of things going on down at the city that you may not be aware of. And I'm, I'll just give this to the clerk so she can give it to the attorney. This is a couple exhibits I gave to the Newark FBI office because I I have an ongoing litigation case that's very extensive involving four states and a judge I spoke to in '23 who resigned as a judge after I spoke to him for an hour with nine opposing lawyers on the other side. So here is a summary report I gave to an FBI office in Newark because I have a litigation case going on in New Jersey as well, California, as well as the state of Nevada, as well as Alabama. But I read the Dorton Group, and I said, you know, you should just give it to a local FBI office. Let them figure it out because it sounds like you could be on the hook for a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I don't know how to follow that, but obviously not as serious as a potential FBI investigation. But, you know, I was walking on the trail from Top of the World, you know, over to Molten Meadows. And, you know, it's just been a consistent thing of, you know, trying to use these walking trails and just getting bombarded by these BMX bikers or these pump track bikes or whatever they're called. And, you know, talking to somebody over there who talked about how, you know, the city wants to potentially spend $600,000 on a pump, a bike pump track or something like that over there. And that would be, you know, just inviting more bikers into the city that sort of already overrun our trails, which, you know, the trails are, you know, common use with with walkers, just like bikers get to use the the roads with cars. And, you know, they're flying through. These are all like electric bikes now. They're big tires. They're in these big groups. And it's really hard to enjoy our public space walking when you have all these bikers come through. And that's not for me to say that that means they need their own track to then do their fun stuff because they're not just going to go there for that. But we don't need to be inviting more people like these BMX bikers to a neighborhood, which is up in Alta Laguna. We're not talking about an area where there's commercial places, you know, they're not spending money in town. They're parking for free, then using a free service that we're now going to spend money on up in Alta Laguna or Molten Meadows. And it's just, it's not necessary. I just want to make sure that in the future, when this, you know, comes up, that the city thinks about, you know, hikers and walkers when it comes to these services. And if people want to build their own little dirt tracks and, you know, do that, then that's totally fine because it's public space or maybe not public space, but they can, you know, build their own little stuff. But the city doesn't need to be investing in it to attract more people. They have those places in San Clemente. They have them in Huntington Beach or Mission Viejo, and they can go there if they want to. We don't need to be inviting people into our neighborhoods that can overwhelm the the local, the local neighborhoods where there's not adequate parking and where then hikers and walkers don't feel that, you know, they can enjoy the space as well. And one other thing, you know, I try to go to the farmer's market here every weekend. And we have a lot of people assisting everyone to cross the street, which is, I think, a good thing to have some people, you know, you don't want cars flying through on the weekends, and there's kids and families. But to have five people assist crossing the road right here is a little unnecessary. I don't know. I hope that I hope they're not paid because that would be ridiculous for the city to be spending, you know, the hourly wages of for five people to be standing with, like three of them are just standing there checking, you know, not on their phones, but they're not doing anything. So I think it's a great idea to have those people to assist with the cars to help the flow of traffic, but, you know, to try to be as more efficient as possible as we can on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next speaker, please. Are there any other speakers on general public testimony? Speak now or wait till the next meeting. So I, okay, so we're going to close public comments, and we'll bring this back to the council. Let's start with Mr. City Manager. Do you have an update to share with us this evening?
I do have a few things, Mr. Mayor and Council. A few items of note, we have two town halls coming up. First, this coming Thursday, the 30th, starting at 5:00. This one is regarding Laguna Canyon Road. This is mostly for folks who missed the in-person one because we'll cover the same material from several weeks ago. And this one is online. You can access the link via last week's community newsletter. The second town hall is a week from tonight, starting at 4:00. So Tuesday, November 4th. This one's in person. It's to hear more about some improvements planned for Ocean Avenue and a portion of Beach Street. So again, November 4th, starting at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. I did want to take a minute to talk about personnel. I've been in local government for 30 years, 30. I like transparency a lot. But please know that I don't like it when I have to tell you that I can't be as transparent as you'd request. Even though the city is a public entity and our transparency obligations and interests are greater than that in the private sector, our city staff still have liberty interests and privacy protections relating to their confidential personnel files. Our city government still has privacy obligations. These are obligations to both the employee and to the taxpayer. We must comply with the law to not risk a commensurate lawsuit for releasing protected information. The scope of information I have is also relevant. It's likely different from what you have. That includes confidential personnel information. It would be far easier for me if I could show all the math so that any mystery in our evaluation and conclusions could be abated, but that's not legally permitted. So for 30 years, I've navigated these issues as a staff member and as a city manager. It's fine to be skeptical. I respect skepticism. But I respectfully ask that you believe me when I say this. Again, after 30 years in local government as a 23-year resident of Laguna Beach, I approach this with the best interests, personal, professional, of the city I love. I've done so here and will continue to do so. As to our terrific HR director, I asked Aggie to try and stay. But for her, this was for a quality of life decision. And I respect that. And after four and a half years of having her here, the Laguna Beach City Government is in a far better place. Thank you, Aggie, and wish you all the best. Turn that back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam City Attorney, do you have an update to share besides your big win last night for the Dodgers?
It was only up past midnight, so hoping tonight goes quicker. Mr. Mayor, just a quick note, and we'll be talking about more of this in the coming months and next year. Obviously, the legislative cycle is over and the governor has signed a number of bills into law that will impact the city. Some of those are housing bills. That happens every year. I believe there were 45 housing bills signed last in the last few weeks. And so staff's evaluating them, and we will certainly be updating you as to those when the time comes. And I also just wanted to thank Madam Director Nash as well. She, in my time here, human resources is a hard thing to do. You deal with people. As a lawyer, that's probably why I didn't do that. But Aggie has left this place. She took her job incredibly seriously, and she is leaving this place better than she found it. And we're very grateful for you, Aggie. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I'll just report out on some meetings and conversations I've had over the last couple of weeks. We had a meeting with city staff on the concept of a pump track in Molten Meadows. I met with Ed Almanza. We had a Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting on Monday that unfortunately I was not able to attend. Sorry, Jeremy. I met with Sue Kempf, I met with Megan Garibaldi, and had a phone call with Ann Kristoff. I was really happy to participate in an event at the Rivian called, it was a screening of a film called Voices Above Water, and a panel discussion on our ocean-friendly hotels and restaurants. I was also able to attend the First Responders Appreciation Luncheon at Fire Station One today. It's always great to see all the folks who keep us safe on a daily basis and say thank you to them in person. And on Saturday night, I was lucky enough to go on a ride along with some of our police officers. I was not able to stay awake for much of the excitement that happens in this town, but I made it till 11:00 PM. So I was pretty proud of myself. We really just have an amazing public safety staff, and it was great to see a little bit more detail on what they do on a daily basis. I also want to say congratulations to Aggie for your next move. I think you're on to great things, and we're really going to miss you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kemp.
Yeah, I just also want to thank Aggie. I've been working with you for, I don't know how long you've been here, four years or five years or something. You've always been great to work with. And you're a really good HR director, and I have every confidence in you. And I I know you're going to do great in your next endeavor, but we're going to miss you around here. In September, at the end of September, we had a meeting with the Insurance Commissioner's Office. And one of the things they recommended is that we we create these firewise communities. And we've been also working on that through our Fire Mitigation Fire Safety Plan with Sarah Limones and the Fire Department. And I'm happy to report we have three firewise communities in that have been approved. One is in Arch Beach Heights, which has over 100, 500 homes, which means that in getting insurance, you're eligible for discounts now that you're part of a firewise community. There's some requirements come along with that, but that's already been formed. They did a really good job. The same with the terraces out in the out in the canyon and also Emerald Bay. Top of the World's working on the on one, and also just this small Y Street over here is working on one as well. So this is really good. I think it's going to serve us well as a community. I did go to the National First Responders Day Luncheon today. It was great. It's always fun to see everybody. I did want to say that two of the firefighters pulled me aside just on their own and said, what a great fire department we have and how happy they are and how great the morale is. And, you know, I usually have anybody that says that to me. I mean, people don't usually complain, but these people went out of their way to tell me that. And so I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Just a couple of quick items. One is the Laguna Art Museum has its, I think it's 10th Annual Art and Nature coming up November 1 to 10. There's some really fun activities this year. It starts out on November 1st with a fashion show at the museum. And then I think the highlight on November 9th on Main Beach, there'll be about 800 volunteers all out there spelling out SOS, save our Cs in Morse code. So you're all invited. They're still looking for volunteers. So go to the museum website if you want to participate in that. I think it'll be a lot of fun. We we had a Housing and Human Services Committee meeting last week. I'll be bringing up a couple items later that came out of that meeting. I think Sue, the city manager and I, we've been having some discussions with the food pantry about trying to see if we can find a better location for them to serve. They serve almost 400 people a day, which is, and we only expect the demand for food services to increase, especially with what looks like an interruption in federal funding for that. And then finally, I'll pass along my thank you, Aggie, for all the time we spent together while you were serving us well and putting in new procedures and new, kind of bringing a new level of professionalism to the office. So best of luck. I understand why you're doing it. Family's important, and you'll be a lot closer to your family. So anyway, enjoy. We'll miss you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Orgel.
I'll start off with Aggie. Aggie, it's been great working with you. And I've been so impressed over the last several years about your commitment to improving the culture, and that means a lot to me. And that particular aspect of amongst all the other things that you do. And it's been very impressive watching you from union negotiations to various lawsuits to whatever. And it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you the best. Now, as far as some of my meetings that I've attended, I met with Kathy Yurka. I went to Elizabeth Pearson's Celebration of Life. That was a great, great afternoon. We had a promenade status meeting. I attended the Beautification Annual Awards, met with SWA. I also met with Canyon Acres Neighborhood Group to discuss a drug rehab facility up in their neighborhood. I also attended the Rivian event with the Surf Rider Foundation Ocean Friendly Event. That was a really great event. And congratulations to all the folks that have been working so hard on there. I believe there's some 60 hotels or roughly around that number that have now committed to being eliminating plastic from their operations. I also attended the Fire Station event today at Fire Station Number One. That was a great, great lunch, great opportunity to talk to all of the the folks there that worked so hard protecting us. I had a community land trust interviews with Bob. We had, it was amazing. We had some 20 roughly, maybe a couple less applicants. And the level of talent of the folks that applied for those positions for that board was was really amazing. And it was just so nice to see that level of interest in the community and especially in the land trust. So anyway, that concludes my update.
Thank you. So I will start by echoing the comments made by my fellow council members as well as city staff about the loss of our of Aggie Nash. I think at the end of the day, we're a people organization. People are our greatest asset at the city. And so you're, you've left the city better off in terms of attracting, retaining the best and the brightest and making the necessary investment. So we will miss you. But you're not going that far away. So we'll see you at, you know, Aqua in the future. So.
Hospitality night.
And so, yeah, I want to thank Aggie. And then I just want to give a, I also attended Elizabeth Pearson's Celebration of Life, and we adjourned the last meeting in her memory, but it was just such a great celebration of her amazing accomplishments. And she clearly left the city better off than than when she found it. And I want to give a shout out to Councilmember Kemp for your your work in helping to organize that that great event for her. And then finally, I want to give a November 1st through 9th, we have the Coast Film Festival coming up, which is always an exciting event. And November 8th and 9th, Jack Johnson is coming to town. I'm sorry, it's for all of you who were not be able to get tickets. I've gotten a lot of texts. I don't, we don't have extra tickets, but it's a good thing to have someone like that coming to town and for us to activate the Irvine Bowl, which is just, I think, such a win for our community. So I'm very excited about that. So with, now that we made it through our council and staff.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing? I wanted to congratulate Public Works for and the contractor for finishing the boardwalk in time for, is done today. So I know it took a long time to get done, but that was about ordering parts. So I got it done in two days. So thank you, Public Works. And that will help the event that Bob talked about be successful.
Thank you, guys. That's great. Thank you, Reza.
Thank you.
Okay, so now what we're going to do is that we're going to go through the consent calendar, and council will pull items, public will pull items. Then what what I'm going to do is we'll we'll take a vote on the items that we're keeping on the consent calendar and approve. And then I'm going to, while staff is getting ready for the items that are polled, we'll we'll take care of the three appeals. So let's start with the council. Are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent calendar? Hallie? Sue? Bob? Mark? Are there any, do any members of the public have an item that you'd like to pull? So why don't you just shout it out? So, hold on. So 16, 15, 14, 15, 16. That's good coordination. Okay. Any other items that we want to pull on the consent calendar? And then so I'm going to note before I make a motion that Councilmember Jones and I are recusing ourselves from item 17, which is an approval of a bond purchase related to the West Street Undergrounding District. So we're, we'll, I'll make the motion with that caveat. So what I would do is I'd move the consent calendar with the exception of items 14 through 16, with the note that Councilmember Jones and I are recusing ourselves as previously indicated on this, on other items related to this issue from item 17.
18.
And for the record, Councilmember Orgel, or sorry, Mayor Protim Orgel recused himself from item 18 at the last meeting. So his recusal will stand as well.
And Anne Marie, that that includes the correction of the typo in 18. Okay. Clarifies that.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I'll accept those. Bob seconds the the motion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then while we're getting staff ready for items 14 through 16, what I would do is let's go to the our public hearings. These are all continuances. So I would like to open, so we're going to move to item A, which is related to an appeal of a design review approval in coastal development permit for 31731 C Code Drive. So what I'm going to do is open the recommendation here is to continue to January 13. So I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Does anyone have testimony? I don't see any testimony. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. I would move that we continue this item to January 13, 2026. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Director Schneider, do you know which of these appeals are being moved? Or Jane, which of these appeals are being moved to the appeals day on?
Do you want me to wait on these? Do we have, I thought we had this all handled.
I think we did. I just want to make sure. But if, or sorry, I see Anthony back there. Maybe Anthony, sorry, Anthony's the right person to ask after I called on everybody else.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The staff recommendations in your agenda reports this evening are the continuance states that staff is currently requesting for the three appeal items before you.
Okay. So none of them are moving to our December Appeal Day?
Not at this time, no.
Still a possibility they could be moved?
It is a possibility. I know we have settled on a, a date for the, the special meeting for the appeals. We have one item that's not on tonight's agenda on Volito Road that we are planning to take to that special meeting. And there will likely be a second item that's added to that meeting, but that is to be determined at this time.
So as I see this, Megan, what we could do is, two of them are going November 18th. Worst case scenario is we, we could take those to the December. So the first, the question I think is that in this first one, is there a chance that we would want to put this on the appeal day? In which case we should just continue it to November 18th and they would keep that option open. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I think that would be my recommendation unless Anthony knows for certain.
For this.
I would, five appeals on one day? No way.
No, I don't.
I don't remember. I don't think we'll do, I think we're just trying to leave our options. It sounds like we're having, we're still scheduling is where we are.
If we do November 18th, it gives maximum flexibility to do, you know, whenever we need to do them.
Correct.
Okay.
There'll be a maximum limit.
I promise you, we won't do five of them.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to amend my, we opened the public testimony. I'm going to amend for item A that we go to, continue it to November 18th, 2025. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Kemp. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're going to consider appeal B, which is, this one is also recommended to be continued to November 18th. This is an approval on Holly Drive. The recommendation is continues November 18th. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there any public testimony on this? I don't see public testimony. So we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. I would move that we continue this item to November 18th as indicated in the staff report. Is there a second on that? Second by Mick Protem. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then item C is appeal of, of a design review approval at 10813 Temple Hills Drive. The recommendation here is to move, continue to November 18th. I'm going to open the public hearing on this, take public testimony. I don't see any, any public testimony. I don't see any. We'll close the public hearing, bring this back to the council. I would move that we continue this item to November 18th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kemp. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then item C is appeal of, of a design review approval at 10813 Temple Hills Drive. The recommendation here is to move, continue to November 18th. I'm going to open the public hearing on this, take public testimony. I don't see any, any public testimony. I don't see any. We'll close the public hearing, bring this back to the council. I would move that we continue this item to November 18th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kemp. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then item C is appeal of, of a design review approval at 10813 Temple Hills Drive. The recommendation here is to move, continue to November 18th. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there any public testimony on this? I don't see public testimony. So we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. I would move that we continue this item to November 18th as indicated in the staff report. Is there a second on that? Seconded by Mick Protem. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then item C is appeal of, of a design review approval at 10813 Temple Hills Drive. The recommendation here is to move, continue to November 18th. I'm going to open the public hearing on this, take public testimony. I don't see any, any public testimony. I don't see any. We'll close the public hearing, bring this back to the council. I would move that we continue this item to November 18th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kemp. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So that, those are our three appeals. So now we're going to go back to the consent calendar. The first item is item 14, conditional waiver of city fees for three in-lu parking certificates at Ocean Avenue. This was polled by a member of the public. So why don't we have staff, unless anyone here wants a staff presentation, why don't we hear from the member of the public who polled it? And then we could kind of take the questions from there. So let's open public comment on item 14, conditional waiver of city fees for three in-lu parking certificates at 224 and 226 Ocean Avenue. Mr. Thomas, please go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, John Thomas. What I'm about to say is not a reflection on the owner of the property at 224 and 226 Ocean. It is a comment on the possible unintended negative implications of taking the proposed action. While Rivian has undoubtedly made positive contributions to the community, there must be a better way to assist with the problem described in the staff report. Waiving fees for in-lu parking certificates for the reasons stated in the report, which are based on the public benefit of increasing business development, employment opportunities and the city's tax base. Doing that could set an unfortunate precedent. What will stop other businesses that are intensifying use and adding employees from asking for the same concession? There is no stipulation that added employees be Laguna residents. If the added employees are not Laguna residents, those additional employees may very likely require more actual parking. And yet the proposed solution is to waive parking requirements tied to the intensification of use. The idea of waiving parking in-lu fees for a business that increases business opportunities by intensifying use without adequately mitigating the negative impacts associated with that intensification is ill-advised. I'm not opposed to you trying to help Rivian, but I urge the city to come up with a better solution because of the potential sets as possible precedent.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Those are all great points made and I second everything that he said there. I think, you know, waiving fees on somebody who, you know, obviously, like you said, Rivian has done some great things for the city, but I don't think like adding another sales office, like we're not adding anything that's going to attract people who want to come into town on that street and like, you know, residents using, like no resident in Laguna Beach is coming to Ocean Avenue to go to the Rivian sales office. So there's no real public benefit to that. And I understand that that building is pretty ugly. We can all admit that. There's, you know, homeless people who are sleeping in front of it. It's something that needs to be cleaned up and it needs to be filled. But giving that benefit of like, what is it, $60,000 and waiving that fee for something that's not really adding value to that street. We're adding a Porsche dealership over at the old, how I remember the old Verizon store. Like, we're not adding things that residents can now come into downtown and use, which I thought is the purpose of our downtown is for residents to come down and use. So adding all these, you know, incentives to companies that, you know, aren't, you know, like the, the, the theater, that's a benefit to downtown. I've gone to events there. It's a great place to be able to, to go and to celebrate different companies and, you know, movie nights and things like that. But a sales office, it's like, what are we doing here? And I think that's just opening up. I don't know if there was deals made in the past for like, hey, do this, then you'll get your sales office then. But, you know, we already have too many Rivian cars in this city. We don't need more park, them to be waiving parking fees. And we don't need, you know, these types of sales offices because, you know, we're not the Tustin Auto Center. You know, we're not, you know, a car dealership town. We don't need to be incentivizing that. And like the previous speaker said, we don't want to be setting a precedent. You know, we should be trying to figure out why was that building empty for so long and why that owner did not try to find other businesses to go in there and why then why that street became so, as some people have said, you know, a little, appeared to look a little dumpy. So I think we should not be waiving those fees. Rivian's, you know, maybe they don't have the money, who knows? But I'm sure they can handle a small fee like that and we shouldn't be incentivizing or giving these free incentives to these large companies that, you know, can probably afford it. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to helping, you know, smaller businesses that have, that don't have multi-billion dollar cap tables that can, you know, that can't afford it. So just something to think about for you guys that I think we should be incentivizing small businesses and giving maybe breaks to small companies, maybe companies owned by, by citizens of the town, but not these major public companies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ann Crisman. I have a business downtown and I agree with the last two speakers. There's Rivian cars all over down there, parking, taking up what could be used for residents or shoppers. I'm not sure why we are courting all these car dealerships. Now we don't have to go to Irvine. Now we can, people can come to Laguna Beach and buy their car. The last thing we need is car dealerships in Laguna that's going to help us. And yes, maybe somebody should have done something about what the owner did with that building and, and not cleaning it up and leaving it like it was. But the last thing we need to do is incentivize Rivian. Yes, thank you for the theater, but that was supposed to be a gift and not to pay to play kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Greg Luviani here. I wasn't going to speak on this subject, but she pulled up kind of a point. When I grew up here, I mean, I've been here my whole life. My family's been here since the 30s. It was like, let's keep Laguna not commercialized. And I understand that some businesses are failing and we need to try to get, you know, different things in to like spice up, you know, business and certain things for income in the community and just the overall economics of the town. But I don't know. I think that maybe turn it into something better rather than just waiving a parking fee for Rivian. I know that they have donated vehicles to the lifeguard marine safety department, which is amazing. But I think we got to, we're letting the soul of our town just slip through the cracks. And that's just, I'm just going to fight for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm, my name is Kent Russell and I'm the manager of the property. So for all the questions that you have with regards to the condition it is or why there were tenants to occupy it, feel free to pull me aside and I'd be very willing to have that conversation with you. But tonight we're talking about the issuance of in-lu parking certificates. And I want to clarify, the use of the property is conjunction, in conjunction and tethered to the theater. So it's not like there's a green parking, what do you call it, a dealership. The deal, the work that happens there is going to happen at the theater. This is actually a break room. They don't have enough space for their employees. So this place is actually a break room and a place for their employees to use. So in that regard, it's functional. They actually came to us to say we need this space because we can't use the theater fully without the space. So the two pretty much are tied together. What we have here is the issue with the in-lu parking certificates. And we had a problem with them because we, we weren't too sure how they're going to work. The problem happened was there was an easement filed and the easement caused some debate as to how they're going to impact the property. The resolution was, okay, let's solve this by issuing in-lus, which will allow the property to be used as it always has. So for decades, it's been used both as a cleaners, as a mountaineer store, as a jewelry store. It's been used for decades. And what the in-lu certificates do is that they allow the property to be used in the same way it's always been done historically. More importantly, now that we have made a transaction with, with Rivian, that allows the city to benefit from that. So for all the money that's, that's being waived, that money is going to be recouped by the city quite quickly through its sales tax increment. There's, it's virtually no money going out. It's going to be recouped. So I think in all in all, it makes a very reasonable proposition to resolve this. It gets the building fully functional so it can be used properly. It gets Rivian in place and it allows the city to recoup any fees that are ultimately waived. And again, if any person's concerned about uses in the past, I'm very welcome and easy to come aside and have a comrades, have that conversation. I want to say thank you for the staff and for the administration who's really worked with me for quite a long time in terms of making this move forward. And there was a lot of back and forth. So I really appreciate all their time. They were very, very helpful and effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? I don't see any. So what we'll do is we'll close public comment and we will bring this back to the council. Who wants to start? Are there questions of staff? I see our Madam Assistant City Attorney.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment on just the comments today that I do want to clarify and apologize that my report didn't clarify it.
Rivian's use, yeah. And to reiterate Kent's position, Rivian, their use is entitled to the theater. This action is to the building and it's, it's, it's a separate, Rivian is not involved in this transaction. This is how we correct an easement that leaves Kent with two parking spaces on the property that, that really per our code makes it difficult for him to attract a viable business there. And that's why we've seen a vacancy there for seven years. In doing this and what's being proposed, the benefits of this arrangement are, we settled a, a parking issue between the adjacent restaurant and those two buildings. We allow both of their uses. We also avoid litigation. We could fight this a different way, which is litigation, which we don't have to do and we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars that way. So really, all parties, we believe that what we're presenting through three in-lu certificates satisfies the needs of all parties at the least, or at the most cost-effective way. It's also a point of sale store. So we are going to tap into a new tax revenue stream for us that when the council, when we brought that tax sharing agreement back a year ago, a little over, we project an additional 250,000 a year. And the council has asked us to take that money and create an environmental fund so that we can establish a fund that can go into implementing green initiatives throughout the city. So that's the, the totality of that situation.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
I, I support the action for, for a variety of reasons. You know, things change and nothing stays static. I, I think the Rivian was the best, you know, opportunity we probably could have hoped for. And, you know, the, they've gone above and beyond in my view as far as what they've done for the community and how they reflect our values and our culture. It's been very impressive. But I will remind some folks of a few things. It's kind of interesting. We, I just was trying to count, I think we had four or five auto dealerships in the early 70s. We had a, where Shirley's Bagels was with Chevy, on Canyon Acres was Oldsmobile, Clio was a Ford dealership. So, you know, it's not, sometimes our, our reflection on history isn't quite what we think it is, you know? And we, I, I think we're at a better place today, you know, with, with our Rivian and how they're utilizing the space in a very environmentally, culturally, socially friendly way. So I, I think we've made improvements. Are things the same? They're not. But I think it's, you know, we're headed in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions or comments?
No, I, I support the, I support the action as well. I think it's a good, you know, there was a lead article in the LA Times this morning about Santa Monica and all the things they're trying to do to respond to the economic decline they had there. And one of the, and we're doing a lot of them already.
My radio station, Voice of Laguna, is a self-sustaining, ad-funded, full-service station. We have all the important conversations and interviews. And each week, we feature and promote a local business with Chamber Chat, a local artist in our Artist Corner segment. And we bring to light important subjects and conversations on every side of every issue with true journalistic integrity. Questions that I ask are always based in fact. We also understand that as a business, there's a cost of doing business. And we want every business in the community to succeed, to contribute to our cities, to our city's economy through taxes and permit fees. Voice of Laguna is the station that just this year has donated over $20,000 in ads to local businesses and $10,000 in services to local nonprofits, truly giving back to this community. And we've never once asked for taxpayer funding, or community donations, or the waiving of any permit fees. We make our money the old-fashioned way. We earn it. The other radio station, KXFM, operates under a different business model. And I don't begrudge them for asking their listeners to pay for programming or for donors to constantly shell out money to keep their operations running. As P.T. Barnum famously said, there's one born every minute. But two weeks ago, their chairman of the board stood right here before council and bragged about $100,000 gift of taxpayer money that they received from the county and $75,000 that they got from the Samweli Foundation. I don't agree with the taxpayer funding part of that, but okay, that's their business model. Now with all that money in their coffers, they want the Laguna Beach taxpayers to cover a $1,600 permit fee. How about just paying it? It's the cost of doing business. They're not asking for the money to fund their 80 volunteers to clear dry brush on the canyon or to clean the beaches or streets. They're asking for this money to waive a fee for a party they wanna throw. No problem. Throw the party, just pay for it yourself. KXFM is like that friend who never reaches for the check at the restaurant. They never offer to pay that check, even when their pocket is full of cash, as it is right now. So I'm not asking them to pay for the tab for the whole table, but maybe just once, just this once, pay for your own meal. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers on this item? Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lex. I'm the Director of Operations at KXFM. This is my second city council meeting, so forgive me, I was not prepared to come up and speak about this. Plainly, we are powered by community. I'm, no, Billy is usually the one up here speaking, but I'd like to comment that I am a very well-educated person. I choose to work for this radio station because I believe in its mission and vision. I'm the one that's organizing this event. I think it's a great way to get the community together. We're involving local partners. We are paying out of pocket for entertainment and other things to put this on. And I just, I don't see the issue with more and more events being thrown. We just wanna have a positive impact and, you know, that money, I'm sorry that you think it's a brag. Huge chunk of that is for a capital expense to relocate the station and, again, support our mission to be a community hub for Laguna Beach and a community center where people can gather in a time where we are more and more disconnected. So would love to see families and kids outside having fun with one another on Halloween, October 31st, 2:30 to 5:30 PM on Oak and Glenary. We hope you can join us. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Are there further speakers on this item? I don't see any. Let's close public comment, bring this back to council. Do we have any questions of staff? Or should we go into comments? I don't hear any questions. Anyone wanna, Hallie, wanna start us off?
Sure. I'm a big supporter and fan of both of our local radio stations. And I am in support of waiving these fees tonight. And I think that there is an opportunity for us as a city and as a city council to do a little bit better in terms of thinking strategically, you know, a year out, about the organizations we wanna support and make sure that those dollars are distributed, those opportunities are distributed equitably across the many organizations that we have in this town.
Well said. Are there further?
Yeah, I agree with that. That's a great idea. I think that if we came up with an equitable, you know, to where everybody can have a bite at the apple, I would support that.
Yeah, cuz I'm not really sure, you know, how often do we waive fees? I mean, and what organizations do we waive them for? I mean, I have no idea.
I've only run into a couple of them. This is one. But I've talked to each of you about, as Councilmember Jones is mentioning, kind of a more structured way of doing that. Cuz it does, it does, it's not as transparent as I'd like it to be. So within the budget process, we will put our heads together and look at if there's a better way of doing this.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I would. This is one that I had a typo on in the staff report. It refers to the day before. So it's really, as the last speaker mentioned, Friday, October 31st, which is Halloween itself, not a day prior.
Okay.
So now maybe we'll get two parties out of it with the closure of Ocean Avenue in the near future.
Okay. Further comments? Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Passes 5-0. Okay. Item 16, the final item on our consent calendar, the Visit Laguna Services Agreement. Is this one where we would, council, would we want a staff report here or should we just open up public comment and hear what the public's saying? Okay. So let's just open public comment on this and go from there. So who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward and provide your testimony.
Hello. Greg Liviani here. Forty-one-year resident. Bob Whalen, I'm sorry, not giving kudos tonight. That was last week. Visit Laguna. I say it with a cringe. I'm not the only resident and local that despises this entity. I know there is a lot of people in the town that like it because of the leverage of the funding to the arts and other, you know, things that happen and whatnot. Ten-year contract is ridiculously out of control. Joanna Bear is in the house, and I'm glad you're here because you're the leader of this ship now. And I pray that you can run this organization better than the previous people did, or CEO. And with the problems.
Greg, do you wanna?
People talk to us.
Oh, sorry. With the problems with the, the social media and just different things and the lack of communication with, you know, and actual understanding from the residents. You guys definitely did not listen to the residents. When we opposed this ten-year contract thoroughly with multiple letters, we had a, you know, the full-on petition and blatantly disregarded us. And I'm just saying that Mark, Alex, Sue, Hallie, Bob, you guys are gonna be, you know, the ones responsible if, you know, shit hits the fan, so to speak, and it goes off the rails. And I pray and I hope that it doesn't. I hope that we have the stewardship stuff initiative aligned before this moves forward into next summer. I hope that there's certain things, I know that we've, that I've spoken with you guys directly about that, you know, the community is outraged by. And this is just, you know, I'm speaking from the heart. I don't have a, you know, I don't have a speech. I'm just speaking from the heart because that's kinda what I do in this situation. And Visit Laguna literally has been exploiting the open spaces in this town for too long for profit. And it showed the drastic increase in destructive tourism, not just to the trails and the parks and the, but our coastline, the trash, the degradation to the coastline, the amount of disrespect. Because this balloon marketing, this dragnet, gilnet marketing, so to speak, all over social media, all over the internet, has created a problem. And I pray that we can get in front of it before next summer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Brandon. I'm here today because of my love and respect for this community. While Visit Laguna may have been a step in the right direction at one point, I'm not sure if a ten-year commitment is the right one now. This whole discussion feels confusing cuz I feel like we were here just a few months ago, several other people here as well. And we're having the same conversation. At that time, it was really confusing. We were even lectured as to what a conflict of interest was. That being said, I appreciate what all of you guys do. And I found that kinda strange, and I feel like we're repeating the same points again. I feel like our voices are being disregarded. And we really have to ask ourselves, aren't there better options that we haven't maybe looked at here? An example is, is, you know, it's leading people to beaches that otherwise wouldn't be easily accessible. And in some instances, it's even resulted in death. Like who's responsible for that when that happens? And how many times is that gonna have to happen? Another thing, you know, with the trash is, a lot of the trash that I see is not even trash that was like obtained from this town. So people spend money out of town, and then they come here, disregard their trash here. Usually it's not in the trash can. And then, you know, locals are kinda paying the price, picking up trash the city's left, spending money on, on all this stuff. That being said, I appreciate all of you guys and hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to speak right now. And, you know, I share all the sentiment of the last two speakers. And it's really unfortunate. I know you guys probably already have, like, the contracts laminated, the, you know, everything ready to go, and these comments are just for show, and there's nothing that can really be done. But, you know, ten-year contract, when I first heard that, I'm gonna be honest, I was like, that's way too long. And then I looked it up, and, you know, it actually is pretty common. And it's not something that I would be okay with. I think ten is too long, especially for a company, whether they have new leadership or not. You know, it seems like they're getting rewarded for, you know, past failures. And it's really disappointing to see that there were no checks put in place where, whether it's a two-year opt-out, five-year opt-out, or a year-by-year, you know, under the guise of new leadership, if they can prove that they're, you know, that they've proven themselves that they're supporting the community and the, you know, hoteliers and, you know, things are overall improving. I think one thing's really interesting, you know, I have family that also live in Hawaii. And Hawaii is, I'll know, not exactly the same as Laguna Beach. There are some similar things, you know? You know, it's a very delicate ecosystem. A lot of tourists go there. There's small, you know, town communities that have to, you know, live in that balance. And they've been overcrowded in the past, you know, before COVID and since COVID, just like Laguna Beach is, having issues with trash, having issues with the sea life, having issues with, you know, affordability, all similar things that have been happening here in Laguna Beach. And what they were able to do, though, they were able to solve it. They were able to, with their tourism board, they were able to solve it. And not saying that we don't wanna visit Laguna Beach, but, you know, they have to really prove themselves. And if you guys aren't gonna put in these checks, you know, I just want you guys to think about these things moving forward. So one thing I thought was really interesting from this article I read about how Hawaii turned it around, is they called it destination management and value optimization, shifting from how do we get higher spending, how do we get higher spending visitors? How do we make tourism better for Hawaii and its people? We don't measure our success solely by the number of visitors, right? Cuz we don't have enough parking. We're not gonna build more parking. We're not just gonna add more and more and more. But, so let me repeat that again. How do we make tourism better for Hawaii and its people? We don't measure our success solely by the number of visitors. We look at the average daily visitor spending, resident sentiment, and visitor satisfaction because we want visitors who stay longer, respect the culture, contribute more meaningfully to our communities, and truly cherish their time here visiting us. And I think that's what's really important, is the balance of the tourists enjoying their time here in town and the community. Because, you know, we can't make it all about the tourists, we can't make it all about the residents. It's a delicate balance. And I feel like right now, this contract does not take that into account. And it's a really sad thing to see that we're just handing over everything to Visit Laguna. But hopefully, they can change our mind and they can prove us wrong.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Okay. I don't see any, so let's close the public comment on this and bring it back to the city council.
Yeah, I'll jump in first, since I've been probably the one with the most experience on this. And Nick, before you leave today, I would suggest you exchange information with Joanna. I think she could share some valuable information with you. Most of what you just said is already built into the plan. Actually, all of what you've said was built into the plan. Greg, you're right. It is our responsibility. We took ownership of this when we voted for it. I 100% agree with you. And I'm, I'm more than happy to take the responsibility. I have 100% faith that the thing is gonna work out. And, you know, I think we all need to stay involved. And there were checks and balances put into place. There's two council board, two council members now that are on the board. There's a variety of other issues. But Nick, I think when you talk to Joanna in the future, and I encourage you to do that, you'll see and you'll be quite impressed just how far and what it is, how the organization is completely transitioning to stewardship, period. That's it. That's what it is. And that's what I ran on when I ran for council, the whole notion of stewardship. It was our opportunity. We could have shut the organization down and done nothing. But this is a chance for us to pivot the organization into turning it into something we want, where it has a positive effect instead of, you know, and I agree, that social media and all that stuff that they were doing in the past was, was not a good, a good plan. And, but I think that we've had the chance to turn it around. But I don't think that this, though, tonight, is really about that. Maybe Gavin can, this is really the agreement, if I understand it correctly, Gavin, the financial arrangement?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Gavin Curran, Assistant City Manager. No, the service agreement doesn't create any new programs or obligations. Those are all pre, all basically made in the management plan that the council approved back in June. Really, the service agreement is how those services are carried out, how the assessments are funded and handled. So it's kind of more, it looks more at, you know, what are the insurance and indemnity requirements for Visit Laguna Beach? How are, when the assessments are collected, how they're remitted to Visit Laguna Beach? How the city keeps its portion? The accounting and reporting requirements? And I think this goes to a couple of comments some speakers made. It's about annual and those biannual performance reviews, kind of the annual, annual audit that's required, the things the city kinda requires any service organization like this to do. And then we have an ability to go in and look at, to make sure they do their annual audit, look at those performance reviews, and come back to the city council with those results. And that's what really this is. So all the other obligations and everything that was set is all done through the management plan.
Okay. So I do have a couple of questions. I mean, I agree that the comments tonight were, that, that battle, if you wanna call it a battle, was fought and won or lost, depending on your perspective, in June. This is just an agreement to implement what already happened then. But, you know, one of the things that was very important, and Mark alluded to it, was the two board, two council members on the board, have the Visit Laguna Beach bylaws been amended to provide for that?
Yes. So the language is in the management plan. The bylaws were just approved by the board, I think this week or last week. But those have been included in their bylaws. So there is the 25% requirement, two council members be on board. And if it goes above a certain amount, they still have to be at 25. So then we'd come back to the council and ask for additional membership, just to maintain that 25% on the board.
Okay. And then, a question about the cultural and environmental stewardship component, which you go to page seven and eight of the report, cuz this, this goes to some of the public comment we had about, you know, how we did, or how the plan was revised from prior plans to include the cultural and environmental stewardship program. So in year one, you know, it was about half a million coming to the city for cultural and environmental stewardship that we will put into a separate fund for purposes of enhancing stewardship efforts or initiatives. In year two, you know, it goes to 25%, cuz year one was kind of an odd. We were, you know, keeping whole some of the existing, like the museum and the playhouse and Elkhed. So we were doing that sort of out of some of the city funding. But in year two, on page eight, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, so $750,000, which is 25% of the pool, half a million of that, assuming, half a million of that based on what's on page 10 comes to the city. So the remaining $250,000 stays with Visit Laguna for them to promote stewardship initiatives as well. So in other words, it's $750,000 come year two. There's $750,000 a year being set aside for stewardship initiatives, half a million by the city and $250,000 by Visit Laguna. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Lost our mayor.
Mark, here in charge.
So anyway, I think, you know, I, people may recall, I pushed for a five-year term in June. The council majority decided to go with the 10. We're going with the 10. And I think absolutely it is on the council, it's on city staffs, it's on all of us to make sure this gets implemented in a way that's going to enhance stewardship initiatives. And it's, it's not, I agree, it's not all about the headcount, you know? It's about quality of life.
Right. And, you know, ultimately, it helps the, everybody involved. It helps the residents, it helps the guests at the hotels. Overtourism doesn't help anybody. There's, there's no upside to it.
Yeah. Yeah, our overtourism problem isn't because of the hotel guests either. It's because of day trippers, basically, that are coming to Laguna Beach because they see us on social media everywhere. They see us on, look on TikTok. I see it all the time. It's TikTok, you know, that people, it has nothing to do with Visit Laguna. But I, you know, we also have the tactical part of this that we talked about a couple of council meetings ago and all the things that we're doing, um, you know, on visitor impacts. And we have a lot of substantial work that we're doing that's apart from, uh, Visit Laguna.
Well, yeah, it's a partnership between the city and Visit Laguna, right? The cities, we're, we're in the middle of doing a couple of ordinance updates, you know, dealing with the pop-ups and some other enforcement things. So there's a couple of things that are happening in parallel that I think that we'll even see more, uh, benefits, um, from this coming, uh, summer. Did you have any other comments since I'm in charge, Hallie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Uh, I really appreciate those of you who are continuing to be involved in this issue. I think, um, it's an important one and I think the, um, responsibility lies on our shoulders to make sure that this goes well. I have an incredible amount of faith in Joanna. I know under, um, her leadership, things are going to go well. Um, and I encourage you members of the public who are, um, so passionate about this as, as I am, to continue to stay involved and you know, you can absolutely come and check in with us and say, hey, I think this is working. I think this is not, as long as you, you do give us credit where credit is due, um, and you give Visit Laguna the credit that they deserve when things do go the right way. So, um, I think there's an opportunity here for us to really work collaboratively on, um, making things better for our town.
And Greg, another, you know, side note, I know we've talked about it ad nauseam, but what we need to, I think what we need to do now is, because remember a lot of this was to shore up our cultural heritage, right? So I think we need to zero in on that a little bit and, and make sure that that's being addressed as well. And so I think that there are some meetings coming up in the very near future that have to do with just that, you know, the festivals and some of the other art organizations, so.
Further comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. So council, do we want to take a break before we get to our business calendar? Let's take a, okay, so let's do a, let's do an eight-minute break. So we'll, we'll resume at, uh, 6:30 on the dot. And then at that time we'll, we'll talk about trees. Okay. So do we, is everyone taking their seats? So, um, what we have is item, business item 22, discussion of public tree maintenance practices. We have Reza Jafari, uh, our, um, assistant director, or our deputy director of public works, as well as Matthew Barker, our city arborist, to provide us a staff report. So please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As Alex just said, my name is Matthew Barker, city arborist, and with me is Reza Jafari, the deputy director of public works. And I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the city's public tree maintenance program and continue our discussion from the July 22nd meeting. This is to highlight how we manage our public trees for safety, long-term community benefit, as well as specific strategies that we use to be mindful to the residents' views. The public works and utilities department manages more than 3,300 public trees located in parks, medians, along sidewalks and other public spaces. Under my direction, this tree care follows a structured inspection and pruning cycle to promote tree health and ensure public safety while maximizing the environmental, social and economic benefits of the urban forest and providing that to all our residents, business owners and visitors. The city is divided into three, three pruning sections as seen on the slide, downtown, north and south. Downtown trees are pruned annually while trees north of Broadway and south of park are inspected and pruned in alternating years. Certain species such as palms and others receive annual maintenance as well, regardless of their location, due to specific species characteristics. Our goal every year is, our goal is for every tree to receive a health and risk inspection, as well as appropriate pruning at least once every two years. Trees in the downtown area are inspected and pruned annually because of the higher density of both people and trees in a compact area that increases the potential for interactions and therefore the need for more frequent maintenance to ensure public safety and tree health. This is intentionally a very proactive pruning frequency. When I am attempting to determine if an existing, existing tree is at risk of failure, the first step is always a basic tree inspection. Tree inspections are often initiated by one of the following ways. Resident inquiries are by far the most common and those can come through email, phone calls or the Ask Laguna request system. Another is through observations made by myself, park maintenance staff, or our tree care contractor while we're performing our daily duties and notice something that warrants a closer look. Inspections are also conducted following a failure event such as a fallen branch or a storm-related incident. When an inspection reveals a significant defect and there's a potential target nearby such as people, vehicles or property, the inspection is elevated to a formal tree risk assessment. This process follows the industry standards established by the International Society of Arbiculture and is designed to evaluate both the likelihood of failure and the consequences of failure should it occur. There are three levels of assessment. Level one is a limited visual inspection, often surveying a large area or a large amount of trees from a moving vehicle. Level two is a basic assessment, a 360-degree ground-based assessment of the tree and potential targets. Level three is an advanced assessment, often requiring specialized diagnostic tools such as resistance drilling, sonic tomography. This can also include a professional climber or an aerial lift to enter the crown of the tree. In most cases, a tree risk assessment is documented through an accompanying arborist report, which provides the city with a record of findings and recommendations that would mitigate the risk of failure based on the tree owner's risk threshold. This is usually achieved through pruning, but sometimes tree removal is the only way to mitigate the risk. The public works and utilities department follows the ISA best management practices and the ANSI A300 pruning standards when issuing tree pruning specs to our contractor. The Laguna Beach Landscape and Scenic Highways Resource Document recommends adhering to the ANSI standards for the care and management of public trees. These are industry-accepted practices that were developed and undergo constant revision by the TCIA, which is the Tree Care Industry Association, to keep up to date with the latest in research and technology. The city's tree care practices are guided by these nationally-recognized standards and tailored to each tree's species, age and condition. And I'll brief you, walk you through a few of these pruning strategies. Crown cleaning is a basic, uh, ongoing routine maintenance where dead, broken and poorly attached branches from the crown are removed, improving structure and reducing risk. Crown raising elevates the canopy for clearance over sidewalks, roads, other infrastructure. This improves structure as well as providing quality of life improvements. Crown thinning improves light penetration to the ground and reduces load experienced by the tree when wind forces are applied and reduces the chance of limb failure. Structural pruning for, is primarily for young, young trees to promote proper branch structure, proper spacing, promoting a central leader and avoid future defects before they become larger and more costly to repair. Lastly, crown reduction is used to selectively manage declining trees, address weather-related damage, or mitigate unavoidable infrastructure conflicts. It is not appropriate for healthy trees, otherwise healthy trees or aesthetic reshaping. So here's an example of when crown reduction would be used as an appropriate recommendation. You can see on the slide, the picture and the example from the National Park Service is an oak that's in decline. You would selectively remove branches to stay ahead of the decline, extending the life of the tree. It allows the tree owner to either prepare for removal or perhaps work in concert with a plant healthcare strategy to, um, this will allow you to either set up a scenario where you could plant a tree in order to take over once the tree removal is ready or, um, prepare for the tree removal and however the tree owner sees fit. But it's specifically to deal with a tree that's in decline. So now I want to revisit why unnecessary crown reduction or topping is harmful and outdated practice for pruning trees. Topping is the indiscriminate cutting of branches back to stubs. It removes excessive live tissue without regard for a tree's structure or health, and this leads to a rapid growth of weakly attached shoots, decay and an increased likelihood of failure. Topping is not compliant with the ISA or ANSI standards and the Laguna Beach Landscape and Scenic Highways Resource Document explicitly recommends against it. For this reason, it's not permitted on any city maintained tree. As you can see on the slide, um, I have highlighted, um, what a real, what a real, uh, topping cut is made on the top left in the, in the diagram. You can clearly see the, where the topping cut was made, where the decay has set in and how it's traveled down into the stem of the branch. And this is where all of the excess material that grows very quickly and very densely would be growing from. So you'd have very dense, heavy material attached weakly to this decaying wood. We occasionally receive requests for view-based pruning. One prominent example is regarding the trees in Treasure Island Park adjacent to the Montage. These 38 privately maintained public trees are pruned by the Montage at the same frequency as public trees in alignment with the same standards. These landscape maintenance guidelines were adopted by city council in 2002, implementing the provisions in the Montage Development Agreement. That said, view equity often improves over time through normal maintenance practices like crown thinning and crown raising when used in concert. These are used strategically to balance the community's interests with the long-term health of the tree. All requests for view-based pruning are reviewed and incorporated into maintenance plans only if they align with tree safety, I'm sorry, safety, tree health or structural needs. The Montage Landscape Guidelines set clear expectations for how trees within the public park are to be maintained. In general, all trees are allowed to grow to their natural form and mature size. Young trees are not to be crowned raised prematurely. Lower branches can only be removed once the tree is self-supporting. The guidelines also prohibit topping under any circumstances. However, selective crown thinning can be performed when necessary to preserve public or private views. All pruning must follow ANSI A300 standards and the ISA best management practices, ensuring that tree care within the Montage site meets nationally-recognized standards and supports long-term health. In the photo, oh, sorry. In the photos of before and after, this is, these are photos before and after the last tree pruning on some of the trees in front of the Montage. Resident concerns about ocean views were heard and thoughtfully incorporated into the pruning approach. This resulted in an improved visibility while preserving the tree's natural crown architecture, form and structural integrity. Here are some additional photos of some of the recently pruned trees on the promenade. I actually was just out there taking these photos today. The pruning just occurred just last week. You can see a similar scenario where crown thinning and crown raising are performed together in compliance with the ANSI standards to, um, there's not exactly a, um, ocean view that's trying to be framed here, but, um, you can clearly see how, uh, you'd be able to view anything behind these trees through the crown after it's been thinned or under the crown after it's been raised over time. So per the municipal code, public trees are specifically exempt from any view restoration claims. In other words, while we take resident input seriously, the city doesn't prune or remove trees solely to reestablish private views. It's important to note that the code also limits restoration claims to applicable vegetation that is located within 500 feet of the claimant's property, which means much of the city's public tree canopy is outside the scope of the view restoration altogether, including much of the trees in front of the Montage and these trees that are shown on the slide in front of the glenary parking structure. The trees, these are the trees as they exist today outside the glenary parking structure: crown-thinned, crown-elevated, over time, allowing for whitewater views underneath their canopy. Lastly, I just want to bring up the point about the differences in private and public tree management. Private and public tree management differ fundamentally in both purpose and responsibility. On private property, owners can make pruning decisions based on personal preference, and any consequences are generally isolated to their own property. Access can be restricted to minimize liability, and while topping may occur, it's always not recommended, but it doesn't carry broader public safety implications. In contrast, public trees are part of a citywide urban forest, interconnected green infrastructure network that provides equitable benefits such as shade, clean air, clean water, stormwater capture, wildlife habitat, to all residents, business owners, and visitors of the city. These trees are located in spaces that are not only intentionally open and accessible to everyone, but the city actively encourages people to visit and congregate within them, including sidewalks, parks, and streets. Therefore, the city does not have the option to limit access to mitigate the risk. Topping, unnecessary crown reduction solely for reestablishment of views not only compromises tree health but introduces structural defects that expose the city to liability. And public trees must be managed in order to enhance public safety and a sustained delivery of these environmental, community benefits to residents and visitors alike. So thank you for your time. That concludes the presentation, and Ian and Reza are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions of staff?
I have one brief question. Matthew, I thought I heard, and maybe I misheard you, that kind of the way we think about how to properly trim trees has changed, just as the science of arborism, if that's a real word, has evolved. Arboriculture, as that has evolved, is it your impression, your professional opinion, that those recommendations have changed?
So the Tree Care Industry Association, in concert with the American National Standards Institute, ANSI, they constantly revise and look at those standards as new technology and research in the field of arbiculture expands. Of course, that has really taken shape in the last maybe 20 or 30, 40 years since Alex Shigeru really revolutionized it into a science before it was sort of an extension of landscaping, but it's really taken off into a branch of science all its own.
Thank you.
Matthew, the Montage trees, I understand what you said, that they're managed by the Montage, trimmed by the Montage, but to your knowledge, has the Montage ever looked at the health of those trees? Like had an arborist come in and take a look at the health? Those trees are big and they're old.
Absolutely. So when the Montage works with their contractor, who they have a different contractor than the city does, but I interact frequently whenever they're on-site, both before the pruning is to be done, during the pruning, and then after, to make sure, A, that the work is of high quality, meets the standards, and is in compliance with the guidelines that council adopted. And I have never found their arborists that they send out to work on the trees or coordinate the work to be lacking in any way.
But do they look at the health of the trees?
Oh, absolutely.
Do they really examine the trees? Like, you know, we had that tree on the roundabout, and we had three arborists thinking when they took it down, it had a 60-foot vertical crack in the middle of it. I mean, so I'm just, I'm very curious. And what does our Development Agreement say? Let's say one of those things falls over on the roadway or something. Do we have to put a eucalyptus tree back, or can we put another tree in there? You know?
I think we'd have to look into the agreement to confirm, but I would suspect that because there's an approved landscape plan, that at a minimum, the Montage would be responsible for replacement of trees per that plan at a minimum, one to one.
Okay.
So I just want to, because I kind of feel like we're having a deja vu moment here, because we talked about all this before. I think there's a couple of different things at play here, right? So there's discretionary, there's general plan policies, there's examples of like the Montage Development Agreement, right? In theory, there's nothing that could preclude, as a council, I mean, it could be a long process, but to amend the general plan policy, amend the Montage Development Agreement. I mean, what I'm also hearing is there's public safety-related concerns based on the American National Standards Institute for, you know, pruning, what is it? What, not arborism?
Arboriculture.
Arboriculture standards, right? Like arborism. Is it city staff's position that hypothetically, we could not make, you know, with our wisdom, in our infinite wisdom as a city council, that we could not make, that if we were to change the... So is the issue of public safety-related arbor concerns based on the best practices from public safety standpoint, or is it the policies themselves? Is there room for us to change these policies to allow for kind of what was, I thought, the consensus from our study session without having a public safety impact? Or is it staff's position that we essentially have to keep doing everything the way we've been doing, because any deviation from those policies or practices would create a public safety concern based on the best available science?
It's a really good question. So both the landscape maintenance guidelines and the way in which we prune our public trees follow those ANSI A300 standards. And so that really provides a baseline for how tree care should be carried out, and deviating from that would be tricky just because those standards are so ubiquitously accepted across the industry and across, you know, municipal tree care in general. And I think when you combine, I tried to demonstrate how when you combine both crown thinning with crown raising, while you still have a tree in between the viewer and the ocean, it definitely opens up and improves the view through normal maintenance, where if you... I get a lot of requests to just lower the height of a tree, and so that the ocean view is completely unobstructed. But what happens as a result of that is you get this very quick, fast, dense, vigorous growth that happens when you make large reduction cuts. And so you have this sort of yo-yo effect where the view is opened up, and then it's blocked, and then it's opened up and it's blocked. And that's not only, can be frustrating, I would think, for the resident, but it also creates a public safety hazard because those shoots are weakly attached to decaying wood, like I tried to show in the slides. So through crown thinning and crown raising, you can not only see through the tree, but eventually underneath the crown as well.
Thank you. Further questions? I don't see any, so let's open public testimony on this item. So if you want to stand up and provide public testimony, now is your time to do so.
Thank you. My name's Terrance Schechter. I own a building on 380 Ocean Avenue, and I'm here representing myself and the neighbor next door. Our buildings go right up to the lot line, and on the other side of that lot line is a huge eucalyptus tree, and the trunk's about 18 inches from the actual structure of the building. The tree is causing lots of issues for both of us. Everything from insurance, we're getting letters from my insurance company. The eucalyptus tree is a highly flammable tree, so there's a fire risk with the tree. But on top of this, it's dumping an enormous amount of leaves onto our building. This, today, just before I came here, there's a huge branch had fallen on top of the neighbor's roof as well. We are getting branches coming down, and on average, it's costing us about $2,000 a year for the maintenance of the gutters, the HVAC systems, the roof, from the damage that the tree has been causing. We have been talking to the city about trying to remove the tree. The city wants to keep the tree, and the city has been pruning the tree, but it hasn't had much of an impact on stopping the damage from happening. Where the tree sits, it's away from Broadway, ocean backs onto Broadway, so it has no impact onto the entrance coming into the city. The other trees in front of it that sort of create that big canopy as you drive down Broadway, so it doesn't really add anything to the city. For us as a property owner, if the city would be willing to remove that tree, we'd be more than happy to pay for a new tree wherever the city wanted to put the tree, where it would add something to Laguna Beach. But we do ask that you remove that tree because it is causing damage to our property, and it's going to continue to cause damage to our property, and we will have to continue to pay for it, as will our neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, 380 Ocean?
Yeah.
What building is that?
It's the brick one with the white 380 Ocean. Chequerprop is the name of the company. It's right next to Factotum.
Okay.
Everyone knows me, Factotum. No one knows who we are. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Terrance.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's John Trevino. I live over by the Montage. And first off, I want to say you have a very difficult job, so thank you for all your time. You have a lot of topics to cover, and you do a great job, so thank you. So the Montage trees, they're all eucalyptus trees. There's more than 38 trees over there. Maybe 38 of them are city trees, but there's over 100 trees parked on that whole stretch of three blocks of Coast Highway. I'm not sure the city maintains them. They just force the Montage to do the work because they show up and tell them how to maintain them. They're completely infested with bugs, these mites, whatever they are. They've come over from Australia. They're getting into my yard, infesting my plants. So nobody's really maintaining them that well. When I moved into my house, I had a beautiful ocean view, beautiful Catalina view. They did an amazing job maintaining them, and now these new policies don't allow them to maintain them like they used to. So they've completely blocked my view, no more Catalina. If I follow these same standards, I'll just tell my neighbors, hey, I don't have to trim my tree anymore. There's new standards. If I trim my tree, it's going to be hazardous. And I think that's complete baloney. So I'd be curious to find out how many eucalyptus trees are on our public tree inventory. Is it 50%? 80%? Because those trees shouldn't even be here. They shouldn't be growing in Laguna Beach. There's a lot of other varieties that we could plant to provide shade, habitat, everything we're looking for besides the eucalyptus tree. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Carrie Trevino, and I live on Ocean Vista. Between all our letters, the signatures on the petitions, the egregious view-blocking pictures of more than 50 homes in our neighborhood, the fire hazard data, which is increasing every single day, it's obvious that this is an issue. It's a grope. And the issue goes beyond aesthetics and property values. It comes down to the safety of our city. The trends are showing that the state of California is making more and more movements to require the removal of eucalyptus trees. And I provided you in my letter with some references on that. Interestingly enough, and I can say this because I'm married to a Cal Bear, one of the most tree-cherishing organizations spearheading eucalyptus removal is Cal Berkeley. And there are really interesting reports on this. I would encourage you to look at those links that I sent. There are also millions available in funding, millions, to remove them. So if we don't adapt to this, we're going to lose it all. It's going to be nothing. Fire is going to wipe it out. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Larry Zeeman. And...
Takes a minute.
There we go. If you can go to the first slide. There's the first one. There we go. I've lived on Los Robles since 1994, and there's five eucalyptus trees at the glenary lot that are now grown to block my view. That's the view that needs to be preserved. And I appeared at the July 22 hearing and showed a procession of many photographs over 20 years where my view was preserved. Among the people from the city that helped me were two city arborists before Matthew Barker, Nate Ferris, and Robert Zadita, and other Public Works people as well, Steve May, Dale Shook, Thomas Coughlin. They all allowed the city to trim the trees so that I would have the view. Everything changed in 2022 when Matthew Barker enacted the new trimming policy that he described today. That's my record of view from 2020. The next city trim was 2022. I went to Matthew Barker in September of that year to show him the pictures and to ask to have my tree trimmed as it had been trimmed for the last 20 years. And the result was the next slide. That's Matthew's September 26 email to me, saying that he wouldn't, aside from minimal trimming, he wouldn't do anything. The reasoning was, as he said here today, that continuing the past practice would harm the trees. The strategy was to let the trees grow as tall as they could, and my view would reappear under the canopy. Please go to the next slide. As you can see, it's unlikely to happen, at least within the next several decades, if at all. Matthew, also...
You can keep going. You have more, 30 seconds.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Yeah.
That's my current view blockage from July, when I took the picture. That's the result of the 2024 trim. The next trim is two years later, 2026. I hope the city council and the city manager will consider these questions. Will the trimming of the glenary eucalyptus cause harm to those trees to preserve my view? Well, we know that over the last 20 years, it didn't. I mean, look at those trees. They're growing, they're healthy. Is it a reasonable city policy to let the trees grow so tall that one day my view will emerge from under the canopies?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate, and your email as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Anne Kristof, and I was involved heavily in the Montage planning and the review of the landscape plan. And preserving those eucalyptus is a really important part of establishing the heritage of that whole area and making it clear that this is a longtime feature of our city. And to remove those trees would make it look like a brand-new project all over again. They were planted by Jerry Palmer, who was an artist who lived at Treasure Island. I want to thank Matthew for his report. It was very thorough, very professional, and I think he's done an excellent job of analyzing the situation. I think that some of the canopy thinning that he discussed could apply to those glenary street pictures that we saw, and possibly those glenary street eucalyptus did have canopy thinning at one point. I don't know, but I think they could benefit from a little more of that, and they don't need to be quite so tall. But I think this is a moderate approach to managing those trees, and I don't think removal is a good policy. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, Matthew and Reza, and I'm hoping we can resolve something that will work out really well for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. Trees, view, equity, and history in our city. Trees, View Equity, and History in our City. So I totally agree with the gentleman that spoke about, you know, the view equity, the bugs and stuff on the trees on the row at the Montage. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but years ago, a guy, someone took a chainsaw to the bases of those and tried to cut them down. And then I guess now they're healthy and I guess they had been tested on. These guys would know better than I do. I agree with like the thinning of the trees and everything. We have a neighbor across from our house, and this is obviously private property, but he totally is aware of the view equity part and like, hey, it's getting real high. Like they'll chop it down or we give him a text or a phone call and he's super nice about it. Obviously, we don't want to take the trees out, but maybe there's something to do to remediate the bugs without damaging them. I don't know, like an eco-friendly pesticide. I don't even know if that exists, but arborism. So I just, I don't know, I want to support Anne. She's been amazing in the community and just, you know, I think there's got to be a happy medium for everybody. And these guys definitely have a lot of work and a lot of trees to maintain. And I think we can all work together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ruben Flores. This is my topic. And I love our trees, the eucalyptus, the pines, all of them. There's a place for each one of them. If the eucalyptus weren't already here, I wouldn't say that that's a plant that we needed to plant today, but they are. And they are historically in California. So for us to just waste breath on trying to make this tree an evil person, an evil thing, is just ridiculous. It's a part of California history, a part of California art, definitely a part of Laguna Beach. But we're on tree maintenance. And tree maintenance is such an important topic, especially in this era of healthy living. And we need the trees. We need the trees to recycle our air. And we have the worst tree maintenance practices than any of our adjoining cities. I've sent numerous emails showing structural, just go to the Sadas Festival. The trees are so well-kept. That company is called Peterson. And how many tree limb failures have you experienced at the Sadas Festival? None. So if there's proper care taken, you don't get those problems. Now, obviously, if a tree is at the very end of its life, something may happen. But as long as you're not applying a lot of water, every time you hear about a tree failure, it's almost 90% because there's too much water being applied. That's exactly what happened to our pine in Nita Carmen Park. So we need a revamping of our parks' maintenance and of our tree maintenance. It's not where it should be. I sent an email to the gentleman here. And Matt, you do a good job and you know your book information. But the application is just not happening well. I sent pictures of the trees being trimmed correctly in Mission Viejo, done by our same arborists. So it's really not even about the arborists. It's about the management of the arborists. I just went by Village Entrance. The sycamores have yet to be thinned out. We were lucky that this last storm, and it was a mild storm, wind and rain wasn't stronger because we've had them before and we've lost the tops of most of those sycamores and those are new sycamores. So I don't know what you need to do, but it needs to be drastic and it needs to be now. And Dave, I know you're doing a valiant effort, but there needs to be a retooling, a re-gearing. They just planted those impatience on the forest and they're dead already. They didn't even put a little fence around them. So there's just so many practices that we need to improve upon. And you guys are the only ones that are going to help us get there. So please, and if you would like to have a private meeting with me, I'd be happy to have that because it needs to start. I've been griping about this for a while.
Thank you, Ruben.
Arborism. Got to start that. There's a landscape industry show next month. You should go.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ruben. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you. I apologize for all the commentary tonight. I wasn't planning on it, but I missed last month, so I have to make up for it. Or not last month, a couple of weeks ago. But I wasn't planning on speaking on this. I didn't know this was happening. Honestly, when I first saw it, I scanned through too quickly. But I have a story that applies to it. I used to live in Ho Chi Minh City in Vietnam. And about, I think it was 10, 12 years ago, they took out a bunch of, I think it was over 30 or 40 trees in downtown Ho Chi Minh City in Saigon. And it just completely destroyed the downtown environment there. Obviously, they have a very different climate. It gets to over 100 degrees for half of the year and then it's crazy rainstorms the other half of the year. But they did it in the name of like, you know, aesthetics, being able to build more because it was inconveniencing some businesses. But those trees have been there for 100 years. And unfortunately, they decided to tear them down. They were planted by the French, so maybe similar issues of us having eucalyptus planted at a time when we thought they were native and then they're not. But we have to be very careful about just deciding, oh, this isn't local, so it's gone. You know, this isn't local, so this is gone. And also, when you cut down a tree that's very tall, it's going to take 20 years for it to grow back and provide shade again. So, you know, we have to be very careful. And I'm not saying the decision's easy, but obviously, there's got to be a middle ground, like some other people have said, of improving the trimming process, not handcuffing yourself to whether it's removal or, you know, let it grow. Because like that other gentleman, you know, who knows how long it's going to take for him to get that view back, if at all. And so I just think it's got, there's got to be middle ground trimming the trees, you know, when you remove something that's permanent. And we've got a lot of eucalyptus trees. You remove those, that you're talking everything on Broadway, all across PCH. And, you know, we don't want this place to be, you know, an unshaded area. Because, you know, you can get into the whole thing about with climate change in other communities and inner cities that don't have the shade and how much hotter it gets in town and that increases, you know, electric bills. And now there's no place to be out in public. So we really need to be careful with the decision-making here, setting a precedent just because of, you know, no offense to some of the people here, you know, some inconveniences. But there's got to be a middle ground and hopefully that can be, a policy can be put in place so things don't get dilapidated when storms come through or when, you know, trees unfortunately, you know, die or have a disease. And so just maybe there's a way you guys can look at other cities. Like I mentioned, the example in Vietnam. But it was really sad what happened and changed the character of the town. And I would hate to see Laguna lose a bunch of trees just because of inconveniences of sidewalks or, you know, for some businesses or because it's not native enough. Because where do we draw the line of when it was considered native, right? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there, Edward Bayek, longtime resident of Laguna Beach. I own a communications company. I've done beta testing and back in '21, '22, I sent City Council, as well as the state, a letter concerning purchasing more Sikorsky helicopters for fire prevention, et cetera. But one of the letters I sent to the OC Fire Chief was a technology developed by a South Korean person that targets during fires. I tried to do the beta test during, right before the LA fires. Anyway, I'm going to resend the letters and I'm going to resend the information to the OC Fire Chief. But I'm listening to trees and I love trees. Laguna is a great city. My recommendation to Matthew is to go visit Beverly Hills and Pasadena, see how they take care of their trees. We do a relatively good job, not a really good job. But one of the trees that really bothered me was the tree behind the high school that was 100 years old. And they overwatered the tree and the tree died. And it was just spectacular tree. And I'm seeing that often in the city and it shouldn't be happening. And I know people worry about fires and they don't like eucalyptus tree, but there are ways to prevent fires using technology. And we can live with our trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there other speakers on arborism? I don't see any. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to close the public comment and bring this back to the City Council. Who wants to start us off?
I want a T-shirt that says that for the record.
One of the, Larry had the images up here. Thank you for bringing those. Those were very helpful, Larry. And I walk by your house all the time and I really feel bad that that view has been lost for all of those neighbors in that area. So what's happened is it's not just the result of a standalone tree. In several cases, the Montage, the example that Larry gave and a few others in town, it's because what happens is we have multiple trees planted and it becomes a giant hedge, right? And I do think it's a bit hypocritical that the city requires individuals to maintain their trees, not to overly obstruct views and then the city. And Matthew, I do understand your point, you know, the urban jungle and I get all of that. You know, there's just two sides, right? So I'm just trying to find some balance here. And so, you know, I know this is going to make a lot of people cringe, but I was concerned as we've gone through a couple of projects in town. One was the Catalina tree removal that we had to debate. We had to, you know, scan for the roots and, you know, check all of that stuff out. And I was asking Dave, I said, so Dave, he told me a story about a branch that fell and killed a woman in Newport Beach. And I said, well, you know, what happened? And he said, well, they came and then they removed all the trees in this whole section and it became barren. And he said that the arborist, I believe it was the arborist at the time, had told him it's too bad that they didn't have a tree replacement program in place where they could have done it incrementally over a period of time, where you maintain some of the canopy. You don't lose it all as you start to maintain the trees. And I thought that that was an interesting approach. You know, trees don't last forever. I don't know if at some point, now is not the time, but I think that it might be worth taking that kind of an approach sometimes. So there's not a case where we end up, you know, losing a big swath of trees in a particular area. I would encourage, my opinion on this particular case is that, I don't know if it can necessarily happen through the crown thinning, but I would like to get close, if not exactly, to where the pictures that we saw in 2020. 2020 wasn't that far long ago. And those trees had been there, I believe, since that parking garage was put in place. So when was that, in the 80s, Bob, the Glenary parking structure? Something like that. So they'd been in there for a while. So anyway, I'd like to, whatever, my opinion is whatever solution we come up with, I think that we need to find a solution that is going to restore some of these views.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, I think hopefully it can be achieved through crown thinning. And one question I had for you, Matthew, was you said the downtown trees we get to every year, we do some kind of, we might do crown trimming or not the topping, but the thinning. And the Montage, did you say is that every other year?
Correct.
So I think one thing we should look at is doing, see if we can do that every year, rather than every other year down there, because there is quite a row of them and there's a number of homes that are affected up above. So I would look for a way to negotiate something with the Montage on that. I think they could help out with that. And we ought to look for other areas. I mean, I think a more, I don't know if aggressive is the right word, but a more active crown thinning approach is something we should look at and I think could restore a lot of the views. It wouldn't, you know, and it's not, as you say, it's not the topping that can really create long-term structural issues for them. So I'd like to see us do that. I don't know if it requires any changes to our current policies, but those are a couple of thoughts.
Further comments?
I really trust the science and, you know, topping trees is bad for trees structurally. I don't think we should be doing it. I like your idea, Bob, of trying to find this balance by doing crown thinning a little bit more aggressively, just more frequently. If we're able to do that in a way that supports the overall health of the trees, I think that's a good idea. I also want to say, Matthew, that I think you're doing a great job and I appreciate you bringing this to the council. These are really hard conversations to have and I know you spend much of your day job having these conversations. So thank you for what you're doing.
Sue?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. You know, we had, I don't know what year it was, 2014 or something. We did, we spent 14 months doing a view policy for trees. And it's worked really, really well for private trees. And I don't think one appeal has ever come to council, maybe one in all that time. But most of the time, it gets handled through mediation. But we were going to work on the city trees and we didn't get to it. And we should do that because I agree with what Mark says. You know, we're not being very responsible with our trees. We just let them grow, take people's view like he's expressed and the Trevinos have expressed and a lot of other people. So my personal opinion is we should talk to the Montage about more frequent trimming. But I also want those trees evaluated by TreeLife or somebody like that. I want a company to look at those because they're big. And Nigell took every one of those eucalyptus trees down on their median. And I called, this was about four years ago, and I called the arborist and I asked him why they did that. And he said, because we don't want the liability. And they talk along the sides, too. So my concern about the trees is not only views, but it's, there is safety. And I personally don't like it that we have those. And I hear what Ruben said, well, they're here now. But I have a problem with those big trees on Coast Highway. We had a lot of traffic there. Those eucalyptus trees go down all around town. We've had this, happens all the time. And that's what really concerns me is the liability. But my two things is I would like those trees evaluated and the Montage to pay for those and also to do more frequent trimming. And also figure out if we lose one of those trees, what we actually have to put in. Because I don't want to keep recreating the same problem over and over and over again.
So I just want to start with a question. So, you know, Terrence raised the, you know, 380 Ocean, the eucalyptus, where it sounds like, from what he's saying, there's an insurance impact. Which when there's an insurance impact, it means the insurance company is basically saying there's a public safety issue that means there's future risk. And so they have to, you know, adjust the premium to account for that. How does that, so when we're talking about, you know, the science of trees, how do we factor in the science related to, you know, fire risk and, you know, other risks associated with these types of trees in making, you know, a removal determination for a tree like what he's describing? Just as a hypothetical?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've spoken a lot with our fire administration, the Fire Marshal, Robert Monagami, and the fire safety inspectors a lot about where fire safety and fire science intersects with tree care. And I'm not a fire scientist. I'm an arborist. So just want to say that first and foremost. But my conversations with the fire scientists, they've told me that a healthy, well-maintained tree is the best defense against any, and as long as it's maintained in a way that doesn't increase the, you know, the threat to continuing a wildfire, the best defense is a healthy, well-maintained tree. Specifically with Terrence at Checker Prop, I've had a number of conversations with his staff. I've met onsite with them several times, expressed the frequency at which we prune those trees, which are behind his building on the frontage on Ocean. And I understand that there is, you know, a maintenance aspect to cleaning up leaves and litter that fall from the tree. But that's pretty expected and widespread when you live in a town that has any kind of urban forest. But I haven't looked or discussed, I think they have discussed the fire hazard aspect with the Fire Marshal already and they came to their determinations.
So should we, so I guess what I'm hearing is that the insurance company would be wrong to think there's a risk there?
I've evaluated those trees personally from when I met onsite several times and I haven't seen any observable defects or any conditions of those trees that would elevate them to a higher likelihood of failure, either limb failure or, you know, a basal failure, anything like that.
Because I think that kind of goes to the heart of my comments. And I agree with what Mark and Sue were saying about the fact that, you know, we have to approach this from, you know, the best science that we know about trees. And I hear what's being said about the fact that we can't, that, you know, you could have trimming, you could have, you know, certain types of things to deal with, you know, public view and private views and that could have, you know, an impact, a public safety-related impact on the tree. But I think that what's sort of missing from that analysis is the public safety-related impact of some of these eucalyptus trees in certain areas. And so I also just strongly agree with the sentiments described by the mayor of Hoteem about, you know, that's government, that it's worse when we have a rule that we make private property owners and we, you know, people literally have like mediation process. It's a very intense process. And for us to not be doing that for our public trees, and I get that what, you know, what staff is saying is, okay, well, that's, you know, that's a good argument, but that's irrelevant from the perspective that, you know, there could be a public safety-related impact on the, you know... there could be a public safety related impact on the, you know, the people walking on the sidewalk. But, you know, going back to the Montage, I, I've driven back from accounts, maybe it was really high winds. And I remember there was a tree, you know, from the Montage on PCH. And so I, I sort of take the view here that we need to take a more aggressive public safety related position here. And then, you know, I, I do empathize a lot with the view equity concerns. Cause again, view equity, we're talking about the history of the town. That's what we're, our goal is view equity. And so to have view equity as it relates to potentially a private tree, but not a public tree. Again, that's just, that's hard for me to reconcile. So I think my, I guess my question to you, Dave, is, you know, where do we go from here? I think we're, we're saying all the same thing that you heard from, you know, there's, I think there's council support for what was described by at least three of us up here. What would the next step in your view, you know, be as it relates to these issues at hand?
So firstly, I think we should look out and cost out what it would take to move to a one-year trim cycle on, for the Montage trees. And it, and Councilmember Whelan, were you talking about the Glenary parking line up to?
Yeah, I don't know if that's, is that already in a one-year cycle?
No, it's a two-year.
Two-year?
Yeah.
But?
So I thought you were going to say to add that to a one-year potentially. Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
And so second, and so we, we can do that, we can look at that. The other thing, as Matthew would point out, we've got an urban tree master plan coming, but that might be a vehicle to talk about of the elements that, of tree transition and that. I'm not using the right words, but making sure as the mayor of Pro Tem says, that we don't, we're not losing an entire generation of trees all at once, that we're maybe taking that, the, making those reductions carefully and replanning with a more appropriate species. So I, I do think we'll strategize about that as a staff, as to how we might do that. I don't know, maybe it's a concept in one of the general plan elements that we'll talk about in a few minutes. And then I think as the council member Kempf mentioned, I'm happy to follow up with Michael and with Matt and Reza about making sure the Montage has done health checks recently on that line of eucalyptus. That's what I heard.
So, and, and this idea about, you know, for years we were doing it where we were able to protect, you know, views without any discernible public safety related impact. Is, is that, is your, is your position essentially that if we were to say, let's apply the same guidelines that we apply to private property owners to ourselves, that that would be creating a public safety related impact?
I've, I've been more convinced of that by listening to Matt talk about the impacts of that. I'm not saying, and I'm not saying there isn't a way to do it. I think we need to look at our policies, that, that are policies that the council adopts.
Yeah.
And they're just in place.
Could we bring back that policy? I think that's what I'm, I'm hearing three votes for that up here.
Well, and I'll have to remind myself, whether it's the Elshard or the, the, there's an element to the general plan that speaks to this too. In other words, how, how much review would be, is it, is it as simple as just council taking one action? Or is it have to have environmental review and planning commission review? And we'll look at that.
You'll bring that back if, if that's, cause it sounds like there's support for that.
You gave me some other things to dig up, so I appreciate that.
The, I mean, I think that this whole discussion, it really, it's like on that, the one where we had five hearings on that one tree, you know, my, my position was essentially, you know, we should remove a tree that's dangerous, but we, then we should do a, you know, two for one, maybe three for one replacement policy. We should be very pro-tree. That's why it's good that we're doing this urban, you know, we should go all in on trees and invest a lot of money into, you know, having great trees across town and a great tree canopy. But what I think we shouldn't have to do is have our residents experience the negative, you know, trade-offs associated with a tree that's not necessarily native to Laguna Beach. And that creates clear public safety impacts. And that's what, you know, UC Berkeley is saying, that's what all these different entities are saying. And so by not, we can say that we're following the tree science, but we're really not following the tree science. If we're, if we're allowing, you know, something that has a proven danger to, you know, create an impact. And I think, you know, Terrence, his, his property, I see as a, as a perfect example that where his insurance company is literally telling him that there's an impact. And, and I guess that's not resonating with our policies. Tally?
With all due respect, I think that the science on eucalyptus is mixed. I think that they can be fire prone, but I think a well-maintained eucalyptus is not especially dangerous. I agree that they are not native species to our town, but they are very important cultural and they, they add to our heritage. They've been here for a hundred years. My concern, anytime we start talking about tree replacement, is none of us sitting at this table are going to be around in a hundred years when those trees are providing shade. So while I think we have to replace trees that are dangerous and that are nearing the end of their natural lives, and we need to replace them thoughtfully with the appropriate species, we also can't lose all of our heritage trees. We can't lose all of our big trees in Laguna Beach. We need to be extraordinarily protective of those, of those trees.
No, I, I agree with that, but like the Montage ones, for example, those were planted like, you know, 23 years ago, right? Oh, so it was before, before the Montage. Okay, then I'm, I messed that up. I, I got that wrong. So yeah, I, I think that, I hear what you're saying. Okay, further, further questions or comments? Do you feel you have clear direction on this, Dave?
I think I do, yeah. I'll have a discussion with our Public Works team and I might bring back an item just to reaffirm it, our approach and consent.
So is there, are we going to have to have like another, like another item? That's another study session and then we have to?
I get the sense you're done.
Make all, all the residents have to keep coming back over and over with the same comments?
You know, one more thing, today I was at CBS and I walked out and there was a tree trimming guys, trimming the pine trees there on the slope by Coast Highway. So I went over and talked to the manager, manager was there. So I said, you know, these trees are blocking the views. What is your, what is your plan here? And he goes, well, the problem is that the shopping center themselves didn't trim them for like three years. And he said, that's the problem. So, you know, I think we need to, you know, I don't know, we just ride those guys about doing maintenance on their, their own trees. Because now they're two, they're bigger than we would like them to be. And he said, yeah, if I had my way, you know, we would keep them smaller. But now, you know, we can't do a lot of reduction on it because of the reasons Matthew described.
Okay, so do you need a motion or do you think you have good feedback here, Dave?
I feel like I have good feedback.
Okay, anyone else want to add anything to, to this? Okay, good.
Just make the problem go away, Dave.
Okay. So I think now we'll move on to item 23, Downtown Specific Plan Phase Two Amendments. And here, well, let me give you a minute for staff to, to regroup here. We're waiting for Hallie and Mark. So we are now going to consider business item 23, Downtown Specific Plan Phase Two Amendments. We have a staff report and I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Matt Schneider, to kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Anthony Vera, sorry.
I will actually be turning it over to our acting senior planner, Kate Kazama, to get us started on this staff presentation. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Kate.
Okay. Good evening, City Council and members of the public. I'm Kate Kazama with the Community Development Department. And item 23 is a review of the proposed Downtown Specific Plan Phase Two Amendments. As a background, the City Council completed the first phase of a comprehensive update to the Downtown Specific Plan in 2020, with implementation starting in 2022. Phase one included streamlining of the business permitting process and new parking standards for non-residential uses. During this prior update, the council had decided to split the update into two phases. Phase two would address the housing, building height and parcel merger components and allow for additional environmental review, along with a visual character analysis to support the changes. The council also wanted the phase two work to be coordinated with the housing element update, which was certified by the state in 2023. To provide some context as to why we are addressing the downtown housing regulations, the state requires that each local agency plan to accommodate new housing units to address the statewide housing shortage. The city's share of regional housing need is 394 new units through 2029, half of which should be affordable to lower income households. The city is not responsible for building these units through city-sponsored projects, but is required to implement a housing plan to reduce development constraints and promote new housing. The various programs in the housing element form the city's housing plan and the city is required to submit an annual progress report to the state. Program 5.2-4 directs the city to adopt a phase two update to address downtown development constraints and to specifically consider allowing increased densities and building height limits, lower parking requirements, relaxed lot merger provisions and other land use tools that can promote new housing units within the downtown. In addition to addressing the housing shortage, the benefits of adding housing in downtown include reduced auto dependency, increased pedestrian activity, economic development, and encouraging more resident-serving businesses that would serve the larger resident population in the, in the immediate area. As mentioned, each jurisdiction is required to submit an annual progress report to the state to track local progress towards meeting the city's housing goals. Based on the annual report that was filed earlier this year, the city has met the allocation for above moderate income units only, with a total of 340 units to date. The City Council previously directed staff to prepare a program EIR to streamline future housing projects. In order to draft the EIR, a critical first step is to finalize a project description that can be consistently analyzed throughout the document. Staff last presented an outline of the draft updates to the City Council in December of 2023. Since quite some time has passed since the City Council last provided direction on the project scope, staff is returning to the council to confirm prior direction and request additional direction before moving forward with the project description. Included as attachment one of the staff report is an outline of the potential phase two changes. Many of the key ideas were presented in 2019 before the specific plan update was split into two phases. Some of the key changes include increased building heights, relaxed density and parking requirements, and provisions to allow lot mergers for housing projects. To begin, staff is proposing to expand the zones where residential uses can be established. This includes allowing residential uses in the arts district and central bluffs by right and without a CUP, which is current, which isn't currently permissible, and allowing artists' work-live units with a CUP in the visitor commercial and multiple family residential zones. Additionally, while in most areas, the street fronting ground floor should remain commercial to maintain the pedestrian orientation of the downtown, staff is proposing to allow ground floor residential behind a commercial storefront if placed beyond a minimum 30-foot enclosed depth. This provision is in line with the housing ordinance updates that were adopted earlier this year, which amended development standards for several commercial zones outside of the downtown. The change to the building height restrictions is the most significant component of the phase two update. As the city continues to encourage non-residential uses on the ground floor in most areas of the downtown, increases to the downtown housing stock would need to come from new units that are created on second and third floor levels. The existing restriction that limits most downtown buildings to a 12-foot height is a significant barrier to adding residential density. The slide before you is a survey of the existing downtown building heights, which range from one to four stories. The areas in gray apart from Main Beach and Along Cliff Drive represent properties currently developed with parking. The image on the left is the north end of the specific plan, which generally encompasses the arts district along Laguna Canyon Road and heading toward the ocean, which leads to the exhibit on the right, which shows the downtown basin. As these exhibits demonstrate, there is currently height diversity along a majority of the blocks and most blocks feature multi-story buildings. Although today, the downtown generally restricts development to a single story, this means we have a large number of non-conforming building heights already. This next exhibit illustrates where two and three-story building heights would be studied. This is both a preliminary and conservative analysis based on staff's observations and expectations for how taller buildings can maintain the visual character of the downtown. With this proposal, property shown in beige would maintain a single-story height, which would be limited to one block of South Coast Highway between Hotel Laguna and Main Beach. The orange represents areas that could build up to two stories, which is proposed for most areas within the downtown. The arts district along Laguna Canyon Road shown in the left exhibit is proposed to allow three stories. And staff also proposes to study the potential for three stories along Forest, Third and Mermaid Street. As part of the program EIR, staff will be working with a consultant to develop photorealistic renderings and a 3D model that show how these changes could alter various areas of the downtown. This will be presented during a community workshop early next year.
When the City Council last reviewed this project in December of 2022, staff at that time was not proposing a density standard for the downtown. Now, what we heard from the City Council is that we should set a density cap that would be studied as part of the program EIR. And the council's direction to staff also included a direction to maintain some flexibility in the density requirements, such that applicants could pursue different housing types in the downtown. So what's before you here on the screen is city's staff, city staff's proposed density cap requirements that would be studied through the program EIR and would ultimately return to the City Council for review and possible adoption of a Downtown Specific Plan update. The standards would vary between 700 square feet of lot area required per unit and that would apply to two-story properties, which would generally limit residential to one upper level floor with more limited allowances for ground floor residential. And in those zones where a maximum height limit of three stories would apply, as well as in the multiple family district, there would be a density cap of 500 square feet of lot area per unit. There were a few assumptions that went into the standard that staff developed for council's consideration. One, we looked at the range of lot sizes in the downtown. Generally speaking, in the downtown, we see small lot development patterns, but they do vary. On the smaller end, a small lot might be approximately 2,100 square feet in lot area. Assuming an average unit size of 600 to 700 square feet per unit, which might accommodate a pretty comfortable studio or smaller one-bedroom apartment, an applicant might be able to achieve approximately three units on a two-story property in, in the downtown and more in areas where three-story height limits would be permissible. To build on a conversation that we had with the council when we were processing the infill housing ordinance a couple of years ago, and which has now been in implementation since May of this year, we're looking to find ways to promote the creation of smaller units that might be market rate, but perhaps are more affordable by design. And so for the City Council's consideration, we wanted to ask the council if there is interest in setting an average unit size requirement, which in your staff report, the suggestion is an 800 square foot maximum. I also wanted to comment on accessory dwelling units, because that is part of the equation here under State 80. Under state ADU law, single-family and multifamily structures are eligible to add ADUs to properties, and per state ADU law, they do not count towards density. For a single-family structure, a maximum of 1 ADU and 1 JADU may be established. And for multifamily structures, there would be a maximum allowance of typically 2 detached ADUs. That's under our current coastal, local coastal program. Now, with current state ADU law, we're currently amending the city's ADU regulations. Under current state ADU law, that maximum would increase to 8 detached ADUs. Now, that would be capped at 8 maximum, but not to exceed the number of multifamily units on the site. And ADU law also allows for the conversion of non-habitable space for multifamily properties, such as a mechanical room, to converted ADUs as well, not to exceed 25% of the multifamily units on the site. And if we go on to the next slide, we'll just take a quick look at one example here on Upper Ocean Avenue, between Broadway and Ocean Avenue, extending generally north from Beach Street. This is an area that we would study for a possible maximum 2-story building height limit. We do have lots in this area that range from 2,100 square feet up to, on the larger end, approximately 26,000 square feet in the case of the Plaza at 303 Broadway, which includes Shirley's Bagels and other non-residential uses. For a smaller lot, like the Hoag Lot, with the density caps that are being suggested by staff, they might be able to achieve 2 to 3 small residential units as part of a second-floor addition for the Plaza. I don't believe that density would necessarily be the constraint there. What would more so limit residential potential is things like open-space requirements and parking requirements. But with the density standards that are in your staff report this evening, it would facilitate a project that might include, for example, a second-floor office conversion to residential apartment units. Next slide, please. And this is showing the math on what that average-unit-size requirement might do, again, in the example of a 2,100-square-foot lot area. So if an applicant were proposing one larger unit, approximately 1,000 square feet in size, and they were looking to create the maximum number of multifamily units, which would be 3 in this case, the unit sizes would range between 500 and 1,000 square feet. And in this example, the average unit size would be 700 square feet, which is below the maximum standard that would be permissible under this standard.
The Downtown Specific Plan currently sets a maximum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The proposed change for lot mergers is to be able to exceed that maximum for certain housing projects along Broadway, the Arts District, and in the CBD Office District. This would include 100% affordable housing projects and market-rate projects with an inclusionary housing component. Staff is also recommending reductions to address the challenges with satisfying parking requirements for infill housing projects. Under current regulations, each residential unit must provide either 1 or 2 parking spaces. And the typical downtown property is unable to accommodate that additional parking that would be required for an upper-level residential addition. In order to make these projects feasible, staff is proposing to reduce the requirement to half a space per residential unit. That would be applicable to market-rate and affordable dwellings and could be covered or uncovered. Lastly, we are also recommending that the urban design guidelines be amended to specifically address upper-level additions over existing buildings. And because some housing projects may only be reviewed against objective standards per state law, it is also recommended that the city develop objective design guidelines in order to maintain high architectural standards across all projects. In terms of next steps, kickoff meeting for the program EIR occurred between city staff, SCAG, and CSG consultants on October 14. City Council's policy direction tonight will allow staff to define the scope of the Specific Plan update in order to prepare a project description for the EIR. Once a stable project description is confirmed, a public scoping meeting to finalize the project description will likely occur early in the new year. Separately, a community workshop to review the renderings and the 3D modeling of the proposed building heights would occur around the same time as well.
Thanks, Kate. And one item that staff will be following up on that will result in an agenda item coming before you quite soon here is a request to fund consultant assistance for development of the objective design standards that would apply to the Downtown Specific Plan. The City Council had previously directed staff to develop objective design standards that would be specific to the Downtown Specific Plan area, and that would ensure high-architectural-quality standards are met with these infill housing projects. We do believe that it's critical that these provisions to facilitate additional development downtown should be paired with objective design standards, and especially with regards to changes in state housing law and where those laws are generally trending. To ensure that the city receives the best possible projects, we do believe that objective design standards will provide necessary safeguards to ensure that even in those cases where the city has to review projects against objective design standards only, that the city is able to effectively regulate those projects and ensure that its standards are being met. That project, excuse me, that request for funding will be coming to the City Council. It's anticipated. We won't go through the city's purchasing policy. It's expected that the funding amount will exceed the city manager's authority, and so it will be agendized for the City Council's consideration at a later date.
The next 2 slides are just a summary of the changes presented in the previous slides, which we can return to.
Thanks. And in addition to that matrix, which we can pull back up on the screen during the council deliberations, if it's helpful, there are a couple of questions that the council may want to provide city staff feedback on. One is, again, this consideration of establishing an average-unit-size requirement. You could also consider limiting its application in terms of areas of the downtown. It may be preferable to apply that standard only within select areas, such as within the more mixed-use areas of the downtown, such as Ocean Avenue, for example, but more on the periphery, where we do see some instances of, for example, single-story development along Mermaid Street in particular. You may not want to have that cap in place. Secondly, policy consideration for the City Council. Does the council desire to restrict upper-level land uses to only certain types, such as residential uses? And taking that a step further, where 3rd-story heights would be permissible, would those 3rd-story additions be further restricted to the housing types that the city may want to promote, such as affordable housing, senior housing, or student housing? And with that, staff is recommending that the City Council review the Downtown Specific Plan Phase Two amendments, receive public input, and provide city staff direction on the proposed amendments. Staff will be taking this feedback to the city's environmental consultant to produce the program environmental impact report. And with that study, we do want to set very conservative assumptions, so I do want to emphasize that point. It is not necessarily the standards that the City Council will ultimately adopt, but we want to ensure that we're making very conservative assumptions so that in the future, if the City Council does adopt a more conservative Specific Plan update, we are covered because we assumed that perhaps there were greater height allowances, and we analyzed for those more significant environmental impacts, for example. So we wanted to start from a very conservative point of view, with the understanding that some of these standards and requirements may be modified over the course of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me, I think, just to frame this conversation, I want to hit on your last point, Anthony. So what we're doing today is, you know, as part of CECL, we have to design the scope of our environmental study. And so these changes are not necessarily what we actually... What we're deciding on today is not what's going to actually be implemented as part of it. It's what's going to be studied and to allow us to have the option to implement it.
If I could interject, I think you're absolutely right. And I would say it's better when you're thinking of an environmental review. You want to, we use the word conservative, but we meant...
It's more expansive, is what you're saying. So to be more liberal in a way, right? And that gives you the ability to be more conservative in the future, where you can't do the opposite. If you're conservative now, and then you want to be more expansive in the future, you're precluded because you're not studying that.
It would likely trigger a recirculation of the EIR.
And then just stepping back, and this is my final question. So we adopted the Housing Element, the 6-cycle Housing Element, 2021 to 2029. One, 2 of the action items in Program 5.2-4 are basically related to doing this. So that's our contract with the state. And so that's, we have a contract with the state, basically, to implement this. Is that a fair, maybe, Madam City Attorney, do you want to weigh in on that?
Correct. So for this in particular, we have the SCAG funding, and so we are operating under that agreement, including the funding and the timeline for all of that. So, and that is created by virtue of the obligations of our Housing Element. That is obviously a separate obligation. That's a larger obligation. We nevertheless also have to comply with that. So we are implementing our Housing Element through this.
Thank you. Further questions? No? Okay, then let's take public comment on this item. So if you'd like to speak on Item 23 related to the Downtown Specific Plan Phase Two amendments, now is your time to do so. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Paul Zafen. I've lived here for 5 decades. I'm an architect. I've done over a million square feet of institutional-cultural buildings across the country. And all I want to point out is that one should be very careful about limiting and making too restrictive height limits. I noticed that you have about a height limit of 12 feet in downtown. And if you look in here, the height of this room is more than 12 feet. And that's without the structure, which has to be large, because it has a large span, it has mechanical equipment, et cetera. So if you're doing cultural facilities, you also, I think you have a limit of about 36 feet. And, you know, 1 foot or 2 feet or 3 feet really makes not a big difference in terms of how big the building is perceived or the set of buildings are perceived from an area like Pacific Coast Highway. So I just tell you this because I've never seen anything, a height limit of 12 feet anywhere, especially in downtown. But even the 36 feet is really constraining in terms of... You imagine you want to do 2 stories of a building like this, and you can't do that within a height limit of 36. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
One thing I've spoken of quite a few times is that we should have boards on either side of this room, because we forget what our objectives are, and we delve on issue number 24 at hand and forget that 23 was just the opposite. So what's happening is we bubbled each item, not thinking about what the item was before or the meeting before or the year before. So you're going to raise the buildings and shorten the trees. So it's, Forest is going to become the window box. So it's, we're not heading in a direction that is equal to what we say we love about our town, charming and quaint and different than Newport and Dana Point. We're heading in that direction, and we're not going to be able to, like we said, we're not going to be able to come back because you've been liberal and then conservative. So I'm not sure that you have priorities intact. And I was having this discussion earlier than week, and I said, do we need revenue so bad? Because we're looking to the future, and we need to get some more money coming in? Is that's the objective? Because if the objective is to keep Laguna beautiful, this is not the way to go. Smaller trees, less trees, and bigger buildings. It's the antithesis of what most people think of when they think of living in Laguna. And for those people that are residents that enjoy the town, it's not where we want to go. Forest is beautiful because it's in perspective to the little cottage-town feeling. So raising it isn't going to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, please.
I wonder if this program has been reviewed by the Planning Commission? Seems like they looked at the Downtown Specific Plan for a very long time. Is this just something staff has done directly with the council? It seems like this should be reviewed by the Planning Commission before this goes much further. I'm concerned about all the things that Ruben just discussed. This is not helping our downtown in most cases. The idea of no CUP for density on the Central Bluffs, that is crazy. I mean, that's where any kind of expensive housing would want to be built. And to say they don't have a CUP is opening the door to chaos and bad improvements. There was a statement made that the present heights in the downtown were non-conforming, and that was done, the 12-foot height limit, plus another, I believe it's another 4 feet that's allowed for mechanical improvements or roofs or something, attics, that sort of thing, was done intentionally to allow for the existing 2-story buildings to remain, and so that there'd be a diversity of heights in the downtown. So it's not a mistake that that height limit was done. It was very carefully done, because if we had like an 18-foot height limit, then all of the buildings could eventually be all the same size, which is not what is village character. So they were respecting the diversity in the existing buildings, working towards keeping the existing buildings and the existing relationships of those buildings. Adding a second story on any of the 1-story buildings really means rebuilding the building. And that is opening the door to, again, violations of our long-term historical quality and the character of these buildings that have been here for a long time. Not providing parking for our residential units. Where are those people going to park? They're going to park in the neighborhoods that surround the downtown, causing more impacts on our residential neighborhoods. This is, I believe, irresponsible. So I think this program needs to be much more studied, much more reviewed before it goes any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Greg Viviani. I didn't even know this was on the agenda tonight. I think it was a great presentation for like Miami or, you know, maybe Waikiki. I don't know. I don't know. Obviously, there's rules and mandates coming from Sacramento that we have to abide by. I get that. You guys have a pretty difficult task. And, you know, I think that there's way better, more constructive ideas that we can, you know, come together to figure out these mandates coming down from Sacramento. Just one of the pictures in the presentation, it was from the boardwalk or the sidewalk down at Main Beach, looking back up towards, I think it was, you know, like, yeah. The hillside would be gone. It would be a second story. And so my view equity, looking back... And so my view equity, looking back at the rolling hills and the mountains would be gone. It would just be more buildings and less trees. I think it's a bad idea. I think that if this gets more wind in the public, I don't even know if the, the community or the residents were aware of this in this, you know, scope. But I definitely am going to let them know at some point. But I think we have to work together. You guys have a job. The residents have equities and characteristics that we care about of the town. And I think that if we all work together and, you know, Alex is thirsty. But if we are able to figure out a way to overcome these hurdles that are, you know, mandated by Sacramento to, you know, for the low-income housing, the artist housing and different things, there's got to be a better way than, than totally upending the downtown area. That's just my, my opinion and my belief. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name's Whitney Aronoff. And I've been coming to city council meetings because I've been wanting to learn more about the actions that you guys are taking that are changing our lifestyle in Laguna Beach. So obviously you all live in Laguna Beach and all of us that come live in Laguna. And we all come for a reason to learn more about what you guys are doing to support or not support the community we live in. And I've just noticed over the past 10 years, it's become harder and harder to function in downtown Laguna. I was raised in Laguna by my parents to use the services within Laguna Beach. It was taught to me that you go downtown to run your errands, go to the bank, go to the grocery store, go to the businesses in town, go to the restaurants in town. You support your community. You don't leave out the ends and spend your money elsewhere. You run the errands within, within town. And since March 2020, it's become extremely difficult to come downtown and park and do your errands. And obviously now that half of Forest Avenue is closed, it's harder and harder just to drive around town and park. And with potential changes that are going to be made to the structures and buildings, it's going to be harder and harder to use our town as our town. It's going to continue to push people to run errands and do things online or to go to Newport, go to Dana, go over the hill. So I just hope that while you guys are having to manage all this information and challenging structures that are coming down to from Sacramento, Sacramento, you just remember like quality of life for the residents and using downtown as a town and a services provider and not just something for tourists or for these potential people that are going to be moving in and taking over these residences that we are being forced to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Penelope Millen, President of Can Do. And I want to comment just on one specific issue for right now. And that is the returning to the idea of extending the downtown specific plan boundary out to, into the canyon, out to El Cad Main Campus. So that was studied when MIG did the initial work on the downtown specific plan. And as you may, some of you may remember, they initiated the Laguna Canyon Planning Study at the same time. And hundreds of canyon residents spent thousands of hours with MIG. And there was a lot of comment on that issue. And MIG's conclusion was clear. And just to quote in part from their report, "We should clearly separate the canyon from downtown. They have significantly different planning issues. They have different character, et cetera." So I would also say that conclusion is largely echoed in a footnote in tonight's staff report that says Laguna Canyon is being studied for potential rezoning to accommodate a greater mix of land uses, including housing as part of the comprehensive zoning code update. So, and that may have separate issues, but again, as, as the footnote states, staff recommends that any rezoning or changes to development standards for properties in Laguna Canyon remain part of the CCCEU project that will allow for a broader study encompassing all Laguna Canyon neighborhoods. The Laguna Canyon neighborhoods generally share a common setting and land use issues and may benefit from being studied as holistically. So, and they note, the writer notes, "This would mirror the approach taken with the Laguna Canyon Planning Study, which was completed in 2017." So that question has been asked and answered, and then asked and answered again. The canyon is the canyon. It is not downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Let's, I guess, add this as another thing I didn't know is, I was going to talk about, and I guess it's time to talk about. I would like to echo the comments of the, some of the previous speakers here. It's almost like a comedy of errors. The perfect encapsulation of like, we look at everything in a bubble and we don't see the consequences of other agenda items that we're talking about, just like the trees and the buildings. I understand there's a lot of technical jargon and thank you for the presentation. And, you know, there's probably more complicated things that we don't understand as residents that is coming down from Sacramento and things we don't, that you guys don't want to do, but you have to do, and you're trying to get in front of it. You know, we, I've heard multiple times that we have until 2029, and I may be wrong on this. And I would be, you know, if somebody could clarify. I feel like there's no reason to get it too far ahead on these things because like other people have mentioned, once you, you know, you draw the line in the sand and say, hey, we're willing to do this, you can't come back. And it's another thing to think about, too. We have a lot of buildings in town that are not owned by residents. And, you know, we can't ban people from other areas buying property, you know? I don't believe in that, you know, people should be able to buy whatever they want. But once you go to the point where you can now raise these buildings to two and three stories, we're not going back. And developers are not, you know, our friends in a lot of, in a lot of ways. And I saw recently that the city is wanting to talk about it getting certified as a blue zone. Or not a blue zone, but a blue city and that we really care for the environment and we're going to be stewards of the environment and protecting our ecosystems. And from what I saw on that graphic of raising all these buildings, this looks like a developer's dream turning into a Miami or Newport, we're Newporting all of coastal Orange County, which is just, I'm sure none of you guys, you know, thought that we would ever see the day. And I don't understand how we can say on one hand that we care for the environment. And then on the other hand, we're going to be building all these, or allowing the regulations to where we will allow developers to add all these additional stories. And none of this is going to look nice, you know, we're going to be blocking views. Who knows what lawsuits are going to be happening? And I understand, or maybe I don't understand that this isn't something that you guys are wanting to do, that you're having to do it, that your hands are tied. But I would say delay, delay, delay as long as possible. Because, you know, hey, there's an election next year with the governor. Maybe the, you know, it's a different person. Maybe the, maybe the state legislature changes and they get all this pushback from all these cities. And they decide to, you know, veto the bill or to, you know, pull back or to, you know, add some amendments. So towns like ours don't have to make all these drastic changes. Or what about us fighting back and pushing back against this, against the state? I don't know why we appear to be bending the knee. And I think having more clarity and more, you know, accountability, as we say, and more transparency, you would have a lot more people down here. And it feels like a lot of these agenda items are hidden at the bottom and people aren't aware that these things are happening. Because I guarantee you, we have over 20,000 people in this town. There would be potentially 20,000 people here if they knew that you guys are going to make the rules change. So you can put three-story buildings downtown.
Appreciate it. Okay, next speaker, please.
Ann Crisman. I'm sitting here shocked. I thought you guys pushing the promenade through was bad enough. And now this is like, promenade is nothing compared to this, that the five of you are up there. I just filled out a really long survey online. That would have been the perfect opportunity for you to bring this up to the public. Do you want to have three-story buildings downtown? Do you know what the cheap, first of all, whoever said that, you cannot build on top of what is existing. You have to rip it down and build. What is the cheapest thing to build is a stucco box. Why do you think that is what Dana Point is? If you want Dana Point, go move there. We don't want it. I can't believe you're making these kinds of decisions and the public does not know about it. I just got an email and I showed up for this. I had no idea you were this far along, that you were thinking about doing this. I thought the Dornan two-story condo project in the canyon was just a one-up. No, it's not. That's what you want to do all throughout the canon. You want to have lights. You want to light up that canyon. Let's put all this living space in there with parking right there at the same level and light up that parking. I, I'm just, I have to say, I'm shocked. And I think you need to put this out to the residents because I don't, first of all, oh my gosh, think of the construction to do this. You think the parking and getting through town is bad now? Imagine when you're ripping down buildings and putting this up. And yes, I had heard this a long time ago. There was all this money in town and they were just waiting. All these developers were waiting that there is so much opportunity for building. And I thought, no, no, there's not. We have a specific plan that, that is supposed to protect the character of this town. You tell me how your plan that you're thinking of protects our character. I, I just, you, you spend all this time on trees. Oh my gosh. And now we're pushing through this thing. I, I'm just, I'm shocked. I have to say, I'm absolutely shocked that you would even consider doing this. And I hope that you put this out to the residents so that they know about this. Put a survey out about that. Let's just see what happens. And then if you're putting all of this building in the canyon, does that mean stoplights? How does, how does that work? Or they just going to be able, we're going to have more people jutting out onto the canyon road? Maybe that's why you're thinking about buying the canyon roads because then you can put stoplights in. I, I don't know. Now I don't even know what anybody's thinking. Because this is just, you know, we went from talking about putting a parking structure in now to redesigning this whole downtown. You're going to put half a parking space, what you think these people don't drive cars? And I do have a question. What do you consider low-income housing, low to middle? Is that about, I don't know, $3,000 a unit? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there public testimony on this item? No? Okay, so then let's bring this back to the city council.
Mr. Mayor, could I add some context to it?
Sure, go ahead.
Megan may want to chime in, too. I don't know if the community development team, could you put up that slide again that shows our arena numbers and how we're doing? How we're not doing? Yeah, it's the fourth one down there. Every time I look at this chart, and I looked at it again, and I turned to Megan and I said, this is a really bad chart. You see the lot of zeros in there, right? And as I think we mentioned earlier, these numbers are carried over in, by the state into the next housing element cycle. And they're added to a whole bunch more that we're going to get. And I, I really appreciate everybody who said, fight back, fight harder, wait. Those are all things that don't work. They didn't work for Huntington Beach. Waiting is not a good pathway, given the amount of planning that we have to prepare for to do things like accommodating these units. And that's why an EIR is envisioned. An EIR facilitates that planning. It facilitates the public comment, the public awareness. Everybody can come to the meetings. You can talk about the consequences. But it's a pathway to get the discussion started and ultimately make some decisions. And we talked about that a little bit. One of the things that if we don't do this, if we don't do this in time, we'll fall under what's referred to as a builder's remedy. And you want to talk about all hell breaking loose. What would happen to Laguna Beach if we became a builder's remedy town? Anybody could build anything, any height, anywhere, basically. So I, I love the theme about messing with Sacramento and HCD, but it's a loser. And I would rather us plan carefully for what we know is coming down. And I do think we can plan carefully. And I'd, I'd ask each one of you that came up and had thoughts about, well, don't do it here, don't do it there. That's fine. Think about where we could do it. We've got to think about where we could do it. And if we don't come up with that, and we've been scratching our heads, I know the council has. I, I don't think anybody hasn't thought about this more than the folks up here as to how do we accomplish these goals and not fall into the builder's remedy situation? So I'm hopeful that the community will embrace the EIR discussion and have a really good talk about it because time is not on our side here. It doesn't, doesn't take six months or eight months or 12 months to do a housing element update. It's going to take at least three years. And we got to start now because 2026 is next year and 2029 is just around the corner. And I, I implore all of us to take it seriously. Otherwise, the penalties are awful for not doing it right.
And I would just add that to, you know, we're in what is the middle of the sixth housing element cycle. The ninth housing, sorry, the seventh housing element cycle will start in 2029. And to talk about how we're not really planning in a vacuum, the last item on the agenda tonight is about a general plan update. And one of the things in there is getting going on the 29 housing element because many, many cities in California took years to get their housing elements through. It was a real fight. The housing element for many cycles was just a process with the state. It wasn't so vigorously vetted. That completely changed with the sixth housing element cycle. The state got super serious about this. And we don't want to be in the position, to Dave's point, of being in a builder's remedy scenario. And so we are trying to forward think as much as possible to prevent that from happening. And this is actually a very comprehensive discussion, to be perfectly honest, because we're planning for that discussion at the end of the night. This is a huge discussion we have regularly. And these, these numbers are very real for the state. And the state, in addition to requiring us to do these numbers in our housing element, has, as I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, I mean, every year we see somewhere between 30 and 50 new housing laws. And those make it, not only do we have to meet these requirements, but those laws make it easier and easier for a developer to build. And so us being proactive and figuring out solutions is going to save Laguna from having the, the, sort of the problematic developments that other cities throughout the state are seeing. And so this is very, very much a thoughtful action that we are considering. And again, to the point that I think the mayor made and staff made at the beginning, this is not what is going to happen. This is studying what can happen from a CEQA perspective. CEQA is just about like, how big is the box from an environmental perspective? The question of what ultimately is going to happen is a different discussion. And studying the big box just allows flexibility, right? If we study, the more we study, the easier it is to pivot and, you know, do one thing more aggressively so that we can do something much less somewhere else. And so that is what this conversation really is about tonight. But I just, I do, to Dave, like Dave, I really want to implore how serious we have to take these housing laws and how draconian the remedies are if we don't participate as the state's requiring.
And, and just, I, I appreciate that commentary. The, so we added, I think, as part of the previous discussion back in 2020, end of 2023, that we have an aesthetics and visual study that's going to basically allow for viewshed mapping, for photo simulation shade and shadow diagrams. So that's going to allow us to really like, for us to say no to this would basically say no to studying this, which could put us on the course of builder's remedy where we have no say, right? So we're basically doing this in a way, we're not making any decisions tonight. All we're doing is approving a contract to study it from an environmental perspective, which is, you know, California law, but then also looking at this from trying to get as much of an understanding. Because I don't think, I mean, you know, I, I don't know that it's fair to characterize, you know, Miami and Waikiki where it's like hundred, you know, foot heights, where we're talking about two and three stories. Newport Beach, they're talking about 225 feet buildings in the Fashion Island area. We're talking about two and three-story buildings in an area where there are already two and three-story buildings that are existing non-conforming. So I, I think it's really important that we, we approach this from a, you know, a practical, realistic, accurate understanding of, you know, what are, what's the law? Which is the law is that we have to find areas for housing. And when you look at it, I think that an area like the downtown where you can have, you know, a European village where people are able to live in the downtown area in smaller units that are more affordable. I think that makes a lot of sense, especially given that we have to find a place for these units. So I, I think that this study that's before us, asking us to basically study the issue is, is the right approach. And just to confirm, so this went through the planning commission before, Anthony, right?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. A very similar presentation has previously been given to the planning commission.
And then any changes would have to go to, I think, three different entities, right? So this will come back with study, the studies of the CEQA documents, the, you know, all the visuals. And then it would have to go to the planning commission, right?
It would return to the planning commission as well as the city council.
And then the city council, and then it would go to the coastal commission.
That is correct.
And then it would come back to the city council to ratify what the coastal commission. And then it would come back to the city council to ratify what the coastal commission's amendments are.
Correct.
So we're talking about basically at least four public hearings involved in any future determinations related to what's before us.
I would agree, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Not to mention this, the downtown specific plan has been, been worked on for quite some time.
We've been working on the downtown specific plan for eight years. I don't know, something like that. Not, this is not a new thing.
So I just want to make sure that everybody's completely clear on what builder's remedy is. That means that a developer, if we're out of compliance, gets to come in on a piece of property and circumvent, working with the city, they get to do what they want, period. They don't need to ask permission. They get to do it. And they, they adhere to a whole separate criteria that's dictated more, I'll just say, this probably needs to be a fact check, but more from the HCD instead of our ordinances. So it's serious. And I understand there's a lot of emotion tied up in all this. But, you know, we're trying up here, we're trying to, you know, we worked very hard on, on the ADU ordinances. We were fearful, you know, that that was, we're having a negative impact. We were forced to do it. I mean, we worked, they, these guys put so much work into that, complete, always refining it, calling coastal commission, working with HCD. It was a, I watched, you know, up close and personal what these guys went through as they were trying to come up with solutions that could accommodate the community. As far as this notion that we're trying to, you know, do all of this for tourists, you guys. I mean, we all need to work together on this and keep things into some perspective here because we're, nobody up here, I can assure you, is up here on the behalf of tourists. It's just silly. And Ruben, I understand, you know, you brought up the tree situation. Yeah, we're trying to manage a situation where half the residents are upset because their views are being taken away. And then we wanted, you know, also maintain our, our urban forest. I mean, so some of this is just, you know, our attempts to manage these situations. It's, it's just not all that easy. And, and again, this is a process that, you know, it's the very beginning. It's not, nothing was intentionally put at the end of the, the agenda to try to avoid public scrutiny. And there's going to be a lot of debate on this. I have some personal opinions on this that are different than what we see that's going to actually be going into this document that covers a broad, a breadth of options. I personally am going to have some pretty strong opinions on some of that. So it's not saying that it's all going to happen, but it's just a step in the process. So again, if we can just keep our wits about us and, and keep this conversation going as a community, I think it will be, we'll all benefit from it.
I guess my, sorry, Bob. I'm, I'm always interested in seeing what the study is going to come back with, particularly an EIR, which obviously is going to be very robust. I share, I'm not going to say I share. I have concerns about building heights in the downtown area. I really appreciate the 12-foot height limit. Those of you who know me well know I have a poster on my kitchen wall about the 36 height, 36-foot height limit on PCH that my parents worked on back when they were involved in Village Laguna. So, I mean, this is something that matters to me and I really understand. And I think there's an opportunity for creative infill development that's going to help us get to these numbers in a way that can preserve the character of our town. And, and I will be reiterative here and say, if we don't do something, we will not like the results that we end up with. So I share a lot of these concerns about height limits. I don't want a downtown full of three-story buildings. I absolutely don't want that. I want to preserve the character of our community. And we need to figure out how we can provide some additional housing units.
You know, the other thing too is, you know, with the housing laws is very, like, we know a lot about housing. And we know, we, we talk, and we live this all the time. For example, you have a single family lot, you can put two houses on there now, SB nine. You can also put ADUs on there. You can put four, four, you could actually, I think, a total of five units on one lot. So this is how onerous the housing laws are. This is how difficult this is. And believe me, we're having major heartburn about it, major heartburn. And we're just trying to navigate. But we know, we do know, you know, one thing I will say, we all live here for the same reason. We love the town, we like the scale of the town. It's a wonderful place to live. And I think sometimes people forget that. We're council members, but we're also residents. And we're very vested, probably more vested in the community than a lot of people. I mean, you know, Anne lives here and has a business here, so she's very invested. But we're also very invested. We spend a ton of time on this. So we're not trying to pull anything over on anybody. We have workshops all the time. We have workshops almost every council meeting, three o'clock. And we put our, you know, we put our tentative agenda out. All this stuff is out there. It's, there's no secret, there's no hiding anything. It's just a lot of work and the state's really making it difficult on us.
I think that's all very well said to describe what the legal landscape is that we're facing and that we're trying to be proactive to address. So, you know, I think beyond, we all want to preserve the essence of what we have here in the community. But beyond that, you know, it's, it's, there are people who actually want more residential housing downtown. It creates more energy, it creates more vibrancy. And that's something that some of the folks here tonight may not agree with. Probably six or eight of them don't agree with. There's a lot of folks in town who do agree with that. So I think when you're expressing views, sometimes you also have to recognize, hey, my view is not the only view. There are, there's a breadth of views in the community. So I think we should go ahead and set the scope here. There are going to be so many hearings and meetings on this. There's going to be so much opportunity for input. We'll welcome the input. It'll result in a better product in the end. We can't just stick our head in the sand and say, we're not going to start the process because we don't like that, that we may have to do something different than we've done for the last hundred years. So I think we should ask staff what direction they need and then get a motion on this thing.
Well said. So what are the issues, Anthony, that are of concern that you need a specific direction on? Yeah, why don't you bring those slides back? And again, with the caveat that what we're deciding right now is not what we're actually going to do, but what we are going to study. I think that's an important caveat.
Thanks, Mayor. Kate is pulling up a, a slide now. And if the council has any input on items number one and two on the screen here, we will be sure that that gets incorporated appropriately into the environmental analysis. Otherwise, I think the scope is, is pretty well set. And again, it's an expansive review of, of a possible project that we'll be returning to the council.
So both these questions are very hard ones because I think the answer in my, and I can't speak for my colleagues, it depends on where, I think there's areas, for example, and where like, you know, I actually grew, George Wise made a good comment in, I was reviewing the notes related to the, the, you know, the hive and the art, like that, that whole area would be a great place for a lot of housing units. So for example, if we had like, if we were to, at this point, say that, you know, we want a third story to only be for certain types of housing, I would be worried that that would preclude that. I don't know that, I, I think we should not make it easy to put a third story everywhere. So, so maybe can I re-ask the question? Is, is there any input here that you need specifically right now? That would, if we don't give it, would hurt us from an environmental document standpoint and limit future options, if that question makes sense?
I don't believe so, Mayor. What we'll do is we'll take the building height restrictions along with the density requirements to do a very enough rough analysis of the number of maximum residential units that could potentially be created. And we'll use those figures to, to do the environmental review for the project, to prepare the, the traffic analysis and so forth. So we could park this discussion for now and return to you at a later date.
Well, but not necessarily park it. I think it's more of just like, I don't know if we have, if we're, I, I don't be, I'm not prepared to, to answer these questions conclusively for the whole downtown area right now. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think the way that I would answer this is, it's going to depend, which is a little bit what you're saying. But part of my focus is again, on those Rena numbers, right? So do we, does unit size requirements and, you know, restricting upper level land use get us closer to meeting those Rena requirements? That's going to be one of my top priorities.
It'd be interesting to see in the art districts, which is already 36 feet height, three stories in the art district. I'd like to talk to you about how we measure that height in a moment. But I would like to understand what the offset would be or how many units would, would that take off of our Rena count? If, for instance, some of these properties were, were developed? Would be interesting to know as we make.
You want to know that right now or?
No.
Okay.
No. And then just one last thing about the heights. Right now, you know, it's measured from grade, right? In the, in the art district. And the floodplain in some areas is quite high throughout the art district. Actually, in the downtown, it might be worth looking at measuring the height from the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain.
Thanks for that comment, Mayor Protem. There is currently language in the specific plan that allows for a, I think it's referred to as a compensatory height limit to account for a higher finished floor that needs to be elevated above the base flood elevation. We probably do need to fine tune that language, but that is something that exists in some, some form and will continue to be part of the downtown specific plan.
Thank you.
Can I restate the question? I think, and I don't know, I don't want to speak for you, Hallie, but so if we hypothetically were to say, okay, we want the third story to be just for affordable from an environmental review document purpose, does that make a difference? Or is it better for us to make the determination after we have the, the environmental document in front of us?
I think to get the maximum flexibility for the council to make future decisions, I would, I would move forward the scope of work as presented.
Okay.
What we're basically asking are variables that you could reduce them further. But quite honestly, you would have the maximum flexibility if we, we move forward as presented.
And really encourage, whatever the standards are, set the standards in the areas that can accommodate the housing that we're okay with and be really liberal to try to get them there. You know, I remember years ago when we created the art district, everybody thought that all of these properties were going to be developed and, you know, there was going to be mass development because it was 36 feet high. And it was based on artist live work housing, but very few ever got built.
Yeah. What, you guys, how many, how many units could we actually get out of the built, current built environment? Like on the second floor? We could, you know, we could just, instead of allowing, we could allow residential. I mean, how much, you know, there's like the building, I always say this, the building across from the lumberyard, it's a three-story building, it's attached to sliced pizza. If that was zoned for housing, there's, all those units have bathrooms in there and I think some have showers. I mean, you could retrofit those and you could get housing in there. You could allow for housing. And I think if you just work in the built environment, you know, we have a good shot at feeling, because none of those units are going to be very big. So they're going to be, you know, by nature, more inexpensive.
I think that's a good point, Sue. So I, I think that in terms of, I don't know that we need this to provide any specific feedback here from an environmental document standpoint. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay, so I think we have consensus. So do you need a motion or is you just looking for feedback?
We are just looking for feedback.
Okay, so I think you got the feedback. I think it makes, I think this is good. Thank you for the great work.
More feedback than you wanted.
And I always appreciate the very thoughtful work by our staff. So I appreciate that.
There's one more thing, let me, so there was mention of the parking standards being reduced. And I don't know if you need this level of detail or not at this stage, but I'm very hesitant to just reducing the, the parking cart launch, but I know we're not to that point yet. But would there be room or would it be an appropriate time to talk about if there was a parking reduction? That there would be participation in a parking management plan for any project?
I have a similar take to you, Mark, about that. But I, I don't think that we need to provide that as part of this.
I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Is that too much detail at this point? Or would the analysis need to include some of those things?
I think at a high level, we would need to understand what the parking rate would do impact wise. And then we could obviously propose mitigation strategies and that could be one of the strategies.
Okay, are you good on that? Okay, good. So I think we're good on this item. Appreciate all the public testimony and great city staff report. And so there'll be a lot more hearings on this. Good, okay. Do we need a break before we go to? Okay, so let's go to item 24, which is the city contribution, the resolution of intention and, and resolution preliminarily approving the engineer's report for the proposed underground utility assessment district at Fairview and La Brea. So it looks like we have, we have Pierre, our capital program manager, who will provide us a staff report on, on this agenda item.
Good evening, City Council. Pierre Sawaya, your capital program manager and public works, here to present on the city contribution, resolution of intention and resolution preliminarily approving the engineer's report for the Fairview La Brea Assessment District. To provide some history on this project, the city council initiated the district in 2021, following a successful petitioning effort by property owners. Utility, utility designs then commenced and were completed by the utility companies in 2024, followed by design review approval later that year. And more recently, a district-wide workshop was held on October 1st with property owners, bringing them up to speed on project milestones, assessment methodology, and also holding a Q and A session with property owners regarding the project. Throughout the project, city staff has conducted outreach efforts, which include mailers, our project webpage updates and meetings with property owners. Tonight, we present the resolution of intention, which essentially begins the balloting phase for this project. Again, this district is not approved tonight. That will be at a public hearing at a later date, should the final vote be successful. But the actions tonight would be to preliminarily approve the engineer's report. The report establishes the maximum assessment amounts assessed to each parcel within the district. And the report also spells out the methodology used to assign those assessment amounts, which include neighborhood aesthetics, safety and reliability from the utility undergrounding project. For this specific district, there are no city-owned parcels, which is a little different from the last couple of projects. But there are, there is no city property within this, this assessment district. And following tonight's actions, formal balloting efforts would begin next month. Also for consideration tonight is a city contribution for the project. As it stands today, the preliminary project cost, or I should say assessed project cost to parcels is $4.8 million. And that's inclusive of the general benefit established in the engineer's report, which is 10% or nearly $475,000. Tonight proponents are requesting an additional city contribution above and beyond the general benefit. And it's for the purpose of lessening the financial burden on property owners with justification that the contribution is warranted due to properties being located near open space toward the east. And undergrounding the, the neighborhood would enhance public safety in and around that neighborhood. So the ask tonight is for city council to determine if a city contribution, an additional city contribution is warranted and what that amount would be. If city council decides upon that and approves an additional contribution, following tonight, city staff will work with the assessment engineer to amend the engineer's report and those individual assessment amounts, ensure that the revised report is made available to property owners prior, prior to the public hearing, and also ensure that the ballots reflect those lower assessment amounts before they are mailed out. Showed on this slide is a cost estimate for the project. I'll just run through a couple of items. The estimated construction and incidental expenses for the project stand at $4.75 million, accounting for the city's general benefit of $475,000. That brings the total adjusted construction and incidental costs as it stands today at four point, nearly $4.3 million. Adding in the bond financing costs of Adding in the bond financing costs of nearly half a million dollar brings us to the total assessment amount of almost $4.8 million. So if any additional city contribution is included, that would further reduce the overall total assessment amount. At a more granular level, we have 90 assessable parcels within this district. Shown on this table is a range of assessments with the minimum assessment coming in at 22,000, the maximum at 75,000, and the average and median at 53 and $56,000 respectively. The one outlier parcel is the Hotel Joaquin parcel, which is by far the largest parcel within the district, and their assessment is a shade over $106,000. And that brings us to our list of recommendations tonight, which are to adopt a resolution declaring the city council's intention to form the undergrounding district, a resolution preliminarily adopting, confirming and approving the engineer's report, appointing the January 13th, 2026 city council meeting for the public hearing for this project to tally the ballots. Acknowledge the intent to contribute $475,000 for the general benefit. If the district is approved, consider the request tonight from the Fairview La Brea proponents for the additional city contribution. Direct staff to return with a funding strategy for the additional contribution above the general benefit. And lastly, to determine that tonight's actions are exempt from CEQA. And that concludes this presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Pierre. Always a pleasure to have you here. Any questions for staff?
I just have one quick question. Can you remind me what the city contributions have been for some of the recent undergrounding districts we did, like Woods Cove and West Street?
Yes, so for Woods Cove, for West Street, as established in the engineer's report, was that 10% general benefit to the public at large. And then city council also took action for an additional 10% separate city contribution.
So to, to follow up, and Hallie and I are a little bit out of practice because we were recused on, on the West Street one, is, so if, if we were to follow that precedent, we would be doing the 10% here, which is, you know, what's in this, what's already established, right? But then plus an additional 10%.
Correct.
That would comply with kind of the request that's being asked of us from the proponents of this project.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or? No? Okay, so let's open public comment on this item. Please come up to provide your testimony.
I brought a slideshow of my life. I'm not going to show the slideshow, but I, I sent you all up before and after so you could see the 25 polls that are going down, 10 on the ocean side, 15 on the inland. We just want to thank staff. Pierre always does an amazing job and he's a big supporter. And thank you for the contribution we hope you give us tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Next speaker, please.
My name's Loretta Lewis. I live at 17th Fairview Street. I'd like to put on the record my support of the preliminary.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My support of the preliminary engineering report for the Fairview La Brea Assessment. I would also like to express my appreciation to the council in considering, as they have on other districts, the additional 10% contribution. The city supporting our safety and the city's safety would mean so much to all of Laguna Beach, and our undergrounding is a step towards the safety of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Gold at 285 La Brea Street. And number one, I want to acknowledge Carrie, who really has rallied and put our neighborhood together and created a rather impossible task to begin with to get to this point is really, really amazing. And that extra 10%, when you consider that we are more lower income mixed units than Woods Cove or even, even Coast Royale will help tremendously in getting this through. And the 20% contribution and the 80% of our hard earned dollars going toward this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, if there are other speakers on this item. If not, we'll close public comment. So I don't see any other speakers. So what we're going to do is close public comment and bring this back to the council. Bob, looks like you want to start.
Yeah, I just, Pierre, I do have a question, Pierre. I'm looking at page 39 of the report, and I did drive the district with, with, with Carrie in her golf cart, which was quite a ride. But, so page 39 is the map. And we've got some of these poles to remain on, you know, that are right up on Coast Highway, right? There's a couple on Ocean, or like four on the ocean side and maybe four or five on the north side. Those will come down as part of our separate Rule 28 Coast Highway project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And my understanding from the last meeting is that's now finally in, Edison has their permit from Caltrans and they're proceeding into a construction phase?
They do for the I get to arch portion. This is a separate 28.
Okay.
But they are still pursuing the permitting on that with Caltrans, so it should hopefully follow shortly.
Okay. The other thing, and this is the same engineer who did our West Street and maybe Woods Cove? No, different.
Just West Street.
West Street, yeah. And it's a good report and, and well, well laid out. The one thing that I think is, and maybe you could, I think it's fine to adopt this tonight, but maybe you could have a conversation with the district engineer before we get to the final engineer's report. It's sort of implied in here, but it would be nice to have a more declarative statement. Under Prop 218, you have to say that not only that you're, you know, allocating to each parcel its special benefit, but that all the parcels that have been specially benefited or will be specially benefited have been included in the boundaries. In other words, you can't, you don't have an outlier parcel that is actually going to get special benefit that you left out. So it's just, it's just kind of a technical, you know, you check the box on, on Prop 218. I'm sure it's implied, I can tell from his reasoning, he's reached that conclusion, but maybe if we could just add a sentence to that effect, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
I'm going to support the additional contribution of benefit. We had our, when we adopted our citywide policy, updated it, we allowed in that for up to 20%. The, the 10% general benefit, which happens to be the same as it was in, in West Street, that can fluctuate. That's really a situational thing. The engineer has to determine district by district. What I like, part of, part of the, in addition to reducing costs for the homeowners and promoting, promoting these districts, if you're going to have a legal challenge to an assessment, sometimes what they challenge is, oh, the general benefit, you know, you, you understated the general benefit, right? So your whole assessment is invalid and we're going to throw it out. By making this additional contribution, we buy a little insurance, you know, against that. So it's just another reason I think that it's wise to, for us to consider some additional contribution on each of these districts.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Wayland. I think that as a city, we want, our goal is to get all these, these lines underground. It makes, there is a general benefit to the city when this happens. And so I think by, you know, responding to, by following the precedent that we've set in other districts, we're, we're living true to, to the general benefit that's achieved by the hard work of all, all the proponents to form these, this district and, and then eventually the feat to homeowners who are willing to tax themselves to pay for, for the specific benefit, but also for the specific benefit for themselves. But again, there is a general benefit. And I think to Bob's point, by the city stepping in and, and adding that extra 10%, we are paying our fair share. So I think it's a fair approach and I'm supportive of, of moving forward with 20% total city contribution. Councilmember Jones?
I'm supportive of that as well.
Me too.
Okay, so I would move that we approve the recommended actions as stated and then, and then basically, consider, agree to the request of adding an additional 10% as a general benefit for the city of, from the city contribution towards the public safety benefit of undergrounding. And should we, should we add because of the proximity to open space or should we keep it broader than that, Bob?
I don't think we have to add a reason.
Okay.
I mean, it's in the staff reports.
Okay, so you know, as, as, so just basically approve the recommended actions with the added 10% city benefit.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. I can't, I can't wait for the golf cart ride when, when all the, the lines are underground. Oh, I did it too, but I'm saying it'll be cool to go on that in a couple of years. Okay, our final item of the night, item 25, an update on amendments to the general plan, including the open spacing conservation element and community development department's advanced planning division and direction on First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for the biological surveying services for the open space element update. We have Jane Abzug, our Assistant City Attorney, and Matt Snyder, our Community Development Director, to provide a staff report for us. So please go ahead.
Just one moment, please, we're just pulling up the PowerPoint.
Yeah, take your time. Okay, I think, are, are we good to go?
Yeah, let's go.
Let's go. Okay, we have the PowerPoint loaded. Good. Please go ahead.
Thank you and sorry for the delay. So item 25 before you is a discussion on two items, really one focused on a contract amendment for our open space conservation element project, and then a more broader discussion about the general plan update, or possibility of a general plan update, I should say. So with regards to the consultant agreement, the city entered into a contract with Ultra Systems back in February of 2004 to do a biological mapping update. It's approximately 3,000 acres of open space, hasn't been updated since the mid 80s. We envisioned this to be largely a desktop exercise with field verification. As the project progressed, it evolved into a more labor intensive field work project that caused concerns for the project management team. We put a pause on some outstanding invoices that we had and we began renegotiating with the firm Ultra Systems. Ultimately, what was agreed to is a contract amendment, which would raise the total value to, not to exceed $196,160. This is in line with the other bids that we have received, so it's not an outlier in terms of total cost. It is an increase from the original amount, obviously of the contract. We're confident that with renegotiation, we have a clear set of deliverables and that, and deadlines, and we don't anticipate any other scope creep, for lack of a better word. There's not really a good segue. I should have a good segue slide, sorry, I wasn't that creative, but segueing over to the general plan update, why us, why now? So, which is a great question. So I think as everyone's aware, the city is required to have a general plan. There's some amended elements. Ours are in various, of various ages, in various levels of conformity with state law. Historically, we've been dealing with these piecemeal, the open space conservation element being the, the current example. One of the, the growing concerns among city staff is we're constantly trying to reconcile the zoning ordinance, the general plan, our LCP. It's very difficult to do it in this piecemeal fashion. And I would say within the last month or so, we've started having really serious conversations about, should we consider doing a more comprehensive update? So there's a couple of reasons why we think it might be a, a, a good opportunity to start talking about this now. One really relates to the conversation we had about the DSP and the housing element. I'll add my two cents that I really feel like the sixth cycle of, of RENA was, was a game changer for local jurisdictions. I have gone through previous cycles and, and they were much more manageable. The state has taken the enforcement role much more seriously. It's become rather routine that we field questions from HCD, looking over various projects that we're working on. The slew of legislation that comes out every year related to housing, I see more and more poison pills put into those bills and it does really concern me. So I'll echo the concerns the city manager and the city attorney brought up. The sooner we can get working on the next housing element, the better. We'll have to make some assumptions if we were to move forward, but the RENA numbers will come out when they come out and we can certainly adjust to that. I do think public safety is, is obviously important in every jurisdiction, but we have some real serious concerns in terms of wildfire, topography with landslides, you have to consider flooding, other earthquakes, all those things. You know, things like evacuation routes, right? So correlating an evacuation route from a safety element to a circulation element. There's a lot of opportunities to create synergy and really look at it more comprehensively. And then, as we already said, the comprehensive, or I'm sorry, the open space element is already under development. There's over 100 policies in that, in that element. One of the things we would hope to achieve is a much more streamlined policy document. You know, eliminate redundancies, really try to synthesize the policies down into something that's really digestible to the layperson and much more easy to implement and use a more cohesive architecture, for a better word, of between all the different elements and how they how they're framed. Couple considerations. I don't want to minimize, this is a really ambitious effort if we were to undertake this. I'm confident that we could move forward with the advanced planning projects we already have underway, such as the DSP, but this would subscribe our staff, and so there are opportunity costs that you should consider. One thing I think that's really good, and an opportunity to leverage here in Laguna, is I think the vision, the values in Laguna are well-established, and a traditional general plan really begins with a really laborious visioning process. I think everyone really knows what the character, the vision of this community is, so I think we could gain a lot of efficiency more by reaffirming what we see that vision, rather than starting from scratch and more of the textbook exercises where you're putting post it's on boards, and a lot of, I think we could bypass that alignment with the state housing cycle. I already talked about that. And another interesting opportunity is the general plan is part of our local coastal program, and the two have to be in line. One of the goals of this project, if we were to undertake it, would be after we've certified a general plan update, we would seek to bifurcate out all the coastal policies, so we would have a standalone general plan that would be outside of our LCP, and then we would adopt an LUP, our land use plan. And there could be benefits for the city moving forward by having them separated. In terms of requested actions, based on the conversation tonight, we'd like to have some community outreach, various stakeholders, have a more robust conversation, but the idea would be we'd bring something more tangible to the strategy session in January to receive ultimate direction on whether to proceed or not. And then with regard to the contract amendment, authorize the city manager to execute that amendment. And that concludes my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Mayor.
I guess it's a question. So Matt, as we've, Hallie and I have met with your team regarding the open space and conservation element. You put together your agendas, and we've kind of gone over the various topics, but what really started to resonate with me, what you just mentioned, was the, you refer to it as the architecture. And I'm wondering if, once we get into this, if it's agreed on, if there's a way that you can show an example of that, because I imagine that architecture would go across all the various elements of the general plan, right? That same methodology. And I just think that's going to be a real game changer for, and as, how we use the documents, and they're just, it seems like it's just going to be a more usable document. I was very impressed with your work on that. So do you see a way we could explain that to the community once we get going?
I do. I wish there was like a best-case example. I've been looking, and I'll continue to look. It's a combination of different techniques I've seen in different jurisdictions, but at a minimum, like I said, we should strive for a more streamlined document. Someone should be able to dive into a general plan and really understand its policies, you know, without reading Moby Dick, right? So, and we should correlate all those policies to our, to our vision and goal statements. So literally, every policy should link back to that, and that, that's really the framework. And then ideally with the architecture, we would have, I don't want to use the word checklists, but guides at the end of each element that would be used internally by staff to review projects against the general plan, and/or the public at large, they could use that as a reference.
Yeah, I think when I talk to the public, there's a, it's not understood when we use the term streamline, there's an assumption that we're leaving something out, something of value, something that represents our values and what we are. When, in your exhibits and through our discussions that we've had in our meetings, when you refer to it more as architecture, it's evident that we're not leaving things out, that we still are getting, you know, maintaining all of the things that are important, that make the document important to us. So anyway, just something to think about.
Matt, just a quick question on this table one. Are these all the mandatory elements? Are they all listed?
Sorry, table one, I believe, includes all the ones we currently have versus the mandatory.
Okay, I think it's, it's, all the ones we had mentioned are mandatory, right? Are...
Well, there's some optional listed. I was just wondering, are there other mandatory items?
I don't think we left out anything mandatory.
We've included all the mandatory.
All the mandatory, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And I didn't include it in, in the report, but if there was an element, and I'm not necessarily recommending this, but if there was another optional element, we might want to consider, it would be economic development, and maybe how that ties into tourist management, those kinds of things.
Hmm. Okay. So is the proposal to review all of these in table one?
Correct. And I, depending on the will of the council, obviously, it's a policy decision. I don't envision that we would be completely redoing every one of these. I mean, some of them are very functional, but making them more consistent throughout. The housing element, obviously, the new cycle is going to drive that, that's going to drive changes for our land use element. I do think we should look more comprehensively at circulation and weave that into some of our safety provisions. Open space also, I think, ties in nicely with the wildfire management strategies.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions, or should we open, open it up to the public? Let's open it up to the public. Okay. Let's take public comment on this.
A few last people standing, along with, along with you. Well, I have to say that I've been through this about five times already. In South Laguna, we did the general plan, then we did a specific plan, then the county said we had to have a specific plan slash local coastal plan, then we got annexed, and the Laguna Beach did it all over again. Meantime, the general plan was being worked on by a citizens committee, and so this has been done many times, and it's very tedious. And expecting the public to be involved in this, to check, to make sure that nothing is now missing, is another task, which is the, so I don't find the general plan cumbersome or difficult to understand. It's got topics, it's got goals, it's got the policies that pertain to it, it's searchable. So I don't look forward to having, to have to do this again. And so the minimum that you can do would be the best, in my view, unless, unless there's some policies that you're thinking that you need to change. If the policies are basically good in their content, why do we have to mess with it? I'd like to know what the policies are that need more work, or that the staff doesn't agree with, or thinks need to be worked on some more, rather than to reformat and redo and massage this all over again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penelope Mill, president of Can Do. So, this, aside from my comments about wildlife corridors, which I'll get to in a moment, I would just say briefly that I don't know that it's so much that policies need to be changed, although definitely policies need to be updated, because many of the policies were written that don't contemplate current circumstances and environmental knowledge. That's certainly true of the open space and conservation element. But I would also say that if you go back and forth between elements, and as noted in tonight's staff report, and as all of you know, there's a required and necess, or required and often even if not legally required, logically required coordination between the elements, and guess what? They often don't coordinate. The definition of something in one won't be the definition of another, the way they're laid out is not identical, the terms they use, where you find a glossary, if you find a glossary. So I'm not, I'm certainly not saying, nor do I think anybody is saying, that we need a wholesale change of the policies. I think Matt was, like, the policies do kind of reflect who we are, right? It's not a wholesale philosophical change. But could they use an update to reflect the world that we are in and moving forward in, and could they get an update for consistency so that the safety element doesn't refer to things, for example, in the open space and conservation element, but don't exist in that element? Yeah, that would probably be good. So, turning to my actual remarks, having taken too much time saying that, as you consider the Ultra, the amendment to the Ultra Systems contract, unsurprisingly, I support that and hope that you do, but I would like the council to make clear to Ultra Systems that the final report needs to include wildlife movement. AB 1889 requires that cities update their conservation element, we combine our conservation element with our open space element, as of the next update of any element in January 2028, to include, and this is kind of a long list, but let's just identify wildlife corridors and wildlife movement. So in their original proposal, Ultra Systems wrote that wildlife movement evaluation would be included in their initial survey, and they additionally stated that the, in the more detailed pedestrian survey, biologists will search for the presence of potential wildlife corridors. So it's clear that the wildlife movement data will be there, it'll be gathered. What's less clear is whether it's going to be added to the mapping and to the final report, right? That's not clearly stated, and we do need that to be done. So separately, nothing to do with the contract, where are we with hiring a hydrologist to getting the hydrology updated so we can finish the open space and conservation element? Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers on this item? No? Okay, so let's bring this back. Why don't we start with Penny's last question? Where are we with the hydrologist? I don't, I don't know what, I don't know the context, but let's get that question answered first.
As part of the open space conservation element, or if we were to contemplate a broader update, we need to update the water course mapping for the city.
Okay.
It's fluid, and it changes, it's dynamic, it hasn't been done for a while, definitions...
Nope, unintended.
I, yeah, I didn't even catch that, sorry. So we do, we have not yet put out an RFP for that. We do need to do that. We've, we've been somewhat encumbered in negotiating with Ultra Systems and moving that effort along. With regard to the wildlife corridor, 1889, it's absolutely a reality. I think the deadline is in 2028, that we have to have that incorporated. To the extent that we have data, Ultra Systems can obviously incorporate that into their final report. I would say that we may need to do something more robust as potentially a general plan update moves forward or we get closer to 2028. So I'll leave it at that.
Further questions? So I think that answers the few questions Penny raised. Further questions of staff or comments from council?
So we're going, we'd have to do something more robust with the wildlife movement portion of the, is that what you're saying?
Potentially.
Right. So in the existing contract with Ultra Systems, there will be some evaluation for the potential for wildlife movement, and then in the final report, there will be a description of the methods and results from that analysis. But without seeing what the results are, we will not know whether we need to do a more robust analysis that's required in 2028.
My hope is we will not. My hope is that that data will be sufficient.
So just a couple of comments, you know, and I can't remember all the specifics, but I think Penny's comment was right on about the inconsistencies and ambiguities. We had a couple of appeals that we were dealing with, land use element and something else, and we just couldn't get them all lined up, right? And so I think there is a lot of that that can be tightened up, so they are consistent across elements, so I'm glad we're doing that. I guess the bigger question I have is, and there was a number in here somewhere, I know it's a big number to do this, but from a staffing standpoint, in your department, Matt, I mean, do we have an advanced planning division, or is that something we're dreaming about? Or, you know, is this going to require a bunch more staff to achieve? What, you know, are we going to hear that in January?
I don't envision that this would require bringing on additional staff, so to speak, but we will have to dedicate staff, at least one full-time staff member, just based on the scope of the work, to be the project manager. A lot of it will be consultant-driven, and then it's a big commitment from the management team, not just in community development, city attorney's office, city manager, other departments as well.
I'd just be a little concerned, given all the other focus we have on the department, that we adequately staff it, if we're going to do it, right?
Understood, and I would say, I'll say that with a really big caveat, because it could come up if I'm sitting here again, is we will be fully subscribed. So a year into the project, if there's other advanced planning work that the council would like to direct, that could trigger resource needs.
Thank you.
That's on record.
That's a very nice way of saying we can't have, have more stuff tossed our way.
No, but I do genuinely appreciate that, because I think it's important, from our perspective, that when we, when there's, you know, when we have priorities, that you are honest and, you know, accurate with us, okay, you know, you can do X, but that means you're not, you can't do Y. So I think it's always important that you guys are, you know, provide that feedback. I, as it relates to the advanced planning, ideally, we get to a point with our community development department where we're able to take people away from current planning as our system improves, right? That's sort of, okay. And then just, I'll just provide some high-level comments. So I kind of went into sort of taking the approach that Ann did, is, you know, if it's not, what's the, what's the reason to, you know, prioritize something like this when there's all these other advanced planning priorities? I think Penny actually provided a good answer to it, but I think, for me, there's just, there's been so many different issues in terms of appeals and even litigation that relates to some of the inconsistencies between the different elements, that it makes sense for us to move forward. I think it's also best practice just for cities in general to be updating your general plan every decade or so. I think that's what, Newport is not how it works there. So I think there's just a lot of value in that, and so I'm supportive of what's before us tonight, and I appreciate, you know, staff being proactive and identifying where are the bottlenecks in the system, clearly this is one of them, and then coming forward with a solution for the council to move forward. So I really appreciate that and all the hard work that, you know, Mark and Hallie and everyone who's been involved with this has, has done. So I'm supportive of the recommended action.
Is that a motion? I don't have any, I agree, I totally agree with you.
I'll move the recommended actions.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
We already, we got, we disposed of our, of our appeals, but if council has a future item, now is the time to do that.
I did mention earlier, so our Housing and Human Services Committee, we had a meeting last week, I guess it was, and one of the members, Joe Hanauer, brought forth an item that the committee requested to be brought to council. And basically, it's a further modification of the ordinance that we adopted last year regarding the commercial above, residential above commercial for the outside the downtown specific plan areas, and they would like to modify that to allow for two-bedroom units in certain cases, subject to certain provisions, I'm trying to find the language. Anyway, they would request that that be brought back with, with some modifications. A provision for, yeah, here it is, a provision for two-bedroom apartments to be implemented, identical to that which was provided for one-bedroom apartments last year, with each two-bedroom unit would not exceed 1,050 square feet, and they're recommending a waiver of certain city fees and parking of one space per apartment unit. I mean, I think the request would be, just to get this on the agenda, the second item they had was, and you'll recall, we did a tenancy termination ordinance, number 1696, and they had certain additional changes they wanted to recommend to us on that. that, that are kind of more enhanced in terms of notification stuff, not, not a fundamental change, but anyway, those are the two items they'd like to see amended.
The, with the second story ordinance one, what could that be? Because like Megan, I guess a question for you, would we have to go back to coastal to change all that within our LCP? Is, or is that something that we could do within the, the, you know, what was approved as part of our LCP amendment previously?
Mr. Ray, without seeing it, I can't be, but I would imagine that it's going to require coastal certification.
I mean, we may have to bundle up with something else, because we only get a certain number of trips, right, to coastal, but we could adopt it, and then you could decide how you're going to submit it, but...
So would this eventually go to the comprehensive code update?
That seems like one solution.
Wouldn't.
It seems like that might be the right solution, because also from a...
Is everybody working on that?
If they could probably waive this with the, if they had included like one, if there was like five units and one was affordable, they'd be able to get a waiver that they could waive this development standard, right?
Correct.
So that might be the easier approach, but I think I'm supportive of figuring out what the right approach is.
Okay, so...
I'm supportive.
Two, three.
So we need, okay, so that's, that's sufficient, then we can get it on agenda whenever, and obviously, it's not super urgent, but...
And maybe as part of that, can we just have, can the director be first staff to kind of figure out what the best way is forward?
Yeah, but I don't, we did have actual discussion about, we don't want to wait for the comprehensive zoning code update, that's way down the road, that's two years, right? They, they really think that there's some possibilities of, you know, producing some units, they did some math, I can't remember it exactly.
But we can come back to us, then we can figure out what the right...
Yeah, we can figure out, right, the right, it was just to tee it up.
Good.
I have an item. I think we should form an ad hoc committee of the city council to plan for our 100-year anniversary.
Yeah, I agree with you. I want to, I'd like to do it. I'll do it, you want to do it? Well, Martha wants to do it.
Do Mark and Hallie, do you guys want to do that?
Sure.
Well, we, can we, do we need to decide?
You can't decide tonight, you can't decide tonight, guys.
Do you know what I...
Decide to put it on the agenda. Why don't we put it on the agenda for when we do our committee appointments, so we can figure it out then in December? What do you think about that? Yep, I think it's a good idea.
Good idea.
So I have, what's that?
No, go ahead.
Something I want to bring up, and I'm not sure, Dave, how to approach this, if we need to bring it back, or I was talking to, well, I've talked to you over in the past months about communication and also Megan, and she just mentioned that maybe it would be good if I just brought it up. In 2023, we reviewed and kind of implemented this communication plan, and I think that there's a lot of improvements that we've made over the last couple of years. You know, Dave, you've been instrumental in a lot of this with your, you know, public outreach, and I really appreciate it. There are, you know, we have a lot going on, especially as we get into this, you know, general plan update and some of the other, the downtown specific plan, and I have some ideas on how we can improve our communications a bit, so I don't know what I would need to do to bring those, do I need to bring them back, or?
So you guys, as a council, last approved a citywide communications plan? Okay. We could ask for that to be revised and brought back to you, or, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I don't want to create extra work for staff here, so maybe is there a better approach for you to just share your feedback with Dave? And if we're...
I don't, I'm making it out of a molehill here, it's not going to be that complicated.
Why don't you just have your conversations with Dave? Because you're going to be...
And we'll do a new graph.
And I don't, we need to, yeah. So are you good not bringing that as an agenda?
I'm good with not bringing it as an agenda. Megan just thought, and I agree with Megan, just to air it and let you guys know that there's some thoughts being thought about, so...
To clarify, the council, did you, both of council member Wayland's suggestions for also the tenancy ordinance, that too? Okay.
Okay, anything else? Good, okay, we nine, nine twenty-five. Thanks, everyone. We'll adjourn the meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, November 18th at five o'clock.